I'd like to call the board meeting for March 11th into session. We'd like to begin by explaining that we have been in closed session where we discussed employee relations and negotiations, no decisions were made. So now I'd like to do the pledge of allegiance. And Dr. Wieswright, would you lead us in the pledge? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the law for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This afternoon, we had a wonderful workshop with Weaver and their choir performing for us, and I would like to ask Mrs. Reed if she would tell, give us an executive summary of the workshop.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, President Davidson. As you shared earlier, we were really fortunate to have the Weaver Whale community join us and Dr. Schmidt share his school vision this year about being the spark. He talked about the focus on the whole child at Weaver while also highlighting their exceptional levels of academic achievement of the student body at Weaver. We got to hear from Elliot and Shayla, two really amazing Weaver Whales, who shared about their cultural celebrations on campus this school year. And then we're really fortunate to end the evening with highlighting Weaver's hero of the heart this school year, Mrs. Francie Ghost, who has really been a triumphant volunteer as well as a fundraising force at Weaver during her 10 years with her two boys on campus.
Thank you so much. Now we're moving to reports and recognitions.
Sorry, Madam President, there were one, there was one other part of the recognition that didn't involve Weaver. We had our Employee of the Year.
Oh, please, yes. Dr. Pulver, would you like to address that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So at the workshop, we also recognized one of our Classified Employees of the Year, Heather Sherrill, who is an Admin One Assistant to our Special Education Department. And we also shared that she was selected as the Orange County Classified Employee of the Year. So we're really pleased to be able to recognize her this afternoon.
Thank you. Joyous person with a brilliant mind. So I'm going to do the President's Report now. I want you to notice there are three buttons, and somehow, no matter what, the last two times, I have not been able to handle three buttons. So we are going to see if I do a better job this time, okay? Over the years, community members have asked about how we, how we find our administrators. There are many factors that contribute to why we are so often able to find great, great leadership within our own district. Many of them are sitting in the back. It starts with the initial hiring of talented, dedicated teachers and staff. Then comes a multitude of opportunities for them to be trained and grow as professionals. Tonight, I would like to highlight our Aspiring Leader Program that really just caught my spirit and caught my heart, which was developed within a partnership with Dr. Wieswright and Dr. Pulver. And Dr. Wieswright has led the charge over the last two years, and deeply appreciative of that. The program began two years ago with volunteers across the district. Each one chose to participate, knowing that there would be no compensation, and it would mean an extensive commitment of time and energy. Our sixteen, over sixteen sessions, participants were provided with lessons in leadership, followed by practice with different real-life scenarios. Together, they explored core values and assessed various leadership styles. Twenty-five participants came from every campus, including the district office, committed to being part of this well-thought-out opportunity that would extend over those two years. And they really are coming on their own time. They still have their full-time jobs as teachers, counselors, whatever, but they, their hearts were in this project. Every session addressed a particular topic and standard, from, from core values to crisis management, to building teams and team-based decision-making, all of which makes great leaders. Critical skills needed for leadership were built into every lesson. Looking at this chart, my personal favorite is Session Six, Ted Lasso's Leadership Playbook for Success. My self-help version of not going to therapy is to put a Ted Lasso segment on. And thank you for using Ted Lasso. He lifts my heart. Guest speakers, including our, our district leaders Andrea Reed, Jerry Friedman, Melissa Davis, and Grace Delk, provided valuable guidance, while administrators from across the district gave powerful support along the way. You can see them working conjunction there in, together, and then broken into smaller groups. All participants partnered with their own site administrators to create and implement leadership projects on their campuses, ranging in focus from special education to school safety. It is obvious that outstanding leadership is growing from within our own ranks. One of the more recent experiences valued by participants was the opportunity to spend the day shadowing an administrator or director. To truly understand the impact of a day in the trenches, I sought input from Nicole Walters, a former District Teacher of the Year, outstanding human being for our, for our district, who joined the program, not because she necessarily wants to be a principal, but because, like many of our educators, she considers herself a lifelong learner, always looking, seeking chances to grow. As a part of this group, Nicole chose to shadow Nicole Pachardo, our Communications and Public Information Officer. They were off and running, literally off and running. In Nicole Walters' own words, "We started by racing to three school sites to capture photos of the Lunar New Year and 100th Day School celebrations for the weekly wrap-up video." Afterwards, we went to the district office, where I observed two Zoom meetings, one with our other Communication and Public Information Officers about immigration policies and their impact on school districts, and another with a marketing film discussing student enrollment strategies. If you look at all that, and then you see the video at the end of the week, Nicole's job is incredible. She does so much, and it's not just what goes on in that video, she's behind the scenes managing so much. Later, we went to the high school where Nicole gave a presentation to the journalism class about careers in her field. After that, we supported the high school's Lunar New Year celebration for the wrap-up. Nicole Walters describes Nicole Pachardo as "a superhero with a contagious energy and enthusiasm." Mrs. Pachardo has her own take on the day. In Nicole Pachardo's words, you notice I have to keep using last names. When Nicole Walters asked if she could shadow me as part of the Aspiring Leaders Program, I was both honored and humbled. I had initially thought that this program was primarily designed for participants to shadow more administrative roles like principals, assistant superintendents, and directors. But the fact that she wanted to learn more about my world, how we tell our story, the story of our district, and how communication shapes our schools, meant so much to me. We spent the day moving, sometimes running from different school sites, learning from each other, talking about how important it is to share the stories of our schools, the impact of communication, and how her perspective as a teacher is so vital in my role. You can see them to the right in this, in this picture. It is obvious that these opportunities are incredibly beneficial. No one understands the complexities of a position, the challenges one faces, the compassion especially needed to be an educator than the person who lives the job, or the individual who gets the opportunity to walk in their shoes for a day. To all the administrators and directors, we thank you for providing such an important and enlightening experience. Dr. Pulver, we thank you for the visionary path of inspiring leadership that you've created that opens doors. As a part of this district for a very long time, I am so proud of the value we have always put on continuing to learn and to grow. The leadership of this district never stops challenging themselves to expand opportunities, not only for our students, but also for our staff. It's what makes us special. The Aspiring Leaders Program gives those involved opportunities to develop a strong sense of the value of partnership and collaboration, and the confidence to tackle complex problems and not be afraid to ask for help. Most importantly, this program creates trust. Trust in a common goal to work together for the betterment of our children, staff, and community. Ryan, you and your team have masterminded an outstanding program. In May, we will honor the participants because of, because of its success. An Aspiring Leaders Program is also in the works for our classified employees, and a new group of teachers and certified personnel will be starting the program in September. We thank you. Thank you. Now, we are going to go to the favorite part of the evening, our student report. Joseph?
Good evening, Madam President Davidson, esteemed board members, Dr. Pulver, any community members watching in person or online, and present supporters. My name is Joseph Claypool, and I am your Student Representative to the Board of Education from Los Alamos High School. This month, the Kindness Club is hosting a book drive that has been developed into a larger school-wide event with over 20 clubs participating. In its inaugural year, one year ago, the Kindness Club was able to collect almost 3,000 books under Zach Donalds' incredible leadership. Now that role has been passed on to Chloe Trem, who I have had the pleasure of working with in order to grow the club even larger than it was last year. The book drive, initially designed to be donated to the Los Angeles County jails, has taken up a new role this year. The Kindness Club is donating these books to teachers, students, and families who have lost their collections due to the recent devastating fires in LA. The drive will take place this month until March 28th. The Kindness Club is hoping to not only receive donations from students at the high school who qualify for service hours and/or CSF points, but also individuals in the community who wish to contribute to these efforts as well. The only requirement the club asks for is that these books are in relatively new condition or only slightly used. The club will also be continuing their weekly meetings during lunch, keeping consistent track of how many donations are coming in, while also discussing plans for other events, whether it be life, whether it be another life skills event, or handing out simple kindness cards at lunch. There aren't many other topics as difficult and complex than the topics of the American Chemistry Society. The American Chemistry Society, also known as ACS, has shown me how multiple-choice problems can in fact require a whole page worth of calculations before finally bubbling a simple letter as an answer choice. The purpose of the ACS Club is to prepare students who have covered the entirety of the AP Chemistry curriculum for brutal nationalized exam that takes place during the month of Marth, March. This year, the students have already taken the exam, which happened on Saturday, March 1st, at Cal State Fullerton. Just to put into perspective how difficult this test is, teachers who teach AP Chemistry find it challenging to score 40-plus points out of 60 on the exam. However, there is so much academic talent at our high school, to the point where there are some students who score in that 40-plus points range. If these students are able to score high enough, they are able to qualify for Nationals with less than 1,000 other students across the nation. Shifting back to Los Alamos ACS Club, the club founder, Spencer Beistrum, leads meetings every other week during lunch in Room 150 to discuss and assign challenging problems that contain similar contents to the ACS exam, often using past exams as good practice questions. The club even has its own Google Classroom so that members have resources to use if they wish to practice more at home. Results have actually recently come back, and from what I hear, the test was brutal this year, with an average of 29 out of 60. But some of our Griffins managed to score in that 40-plus category. This season, the Griffin hockey team had an incredible run, finishing with an impressive 17-1 record and make it to the semifinals of the playoffs. Their season, which runs from September to March, consists of up to 20 games, depending on how, how far the team advances in the playoffs. With practices held twice a week at night at Lakewood Ice, players dedicate hours both on and off the ice to improving their skills. The team consists of varsity and JV squads, each with about 15 players, as well as a JV-D team made up of middle-school athletes eager to develop their game alongside the high school players. Training is intense, with drills like Aces, where players weave through each other in a high-speed maneuver similar to basketball's three-man weave drill, and Turbo, a fast-paced drill, 3V2 drill, designed to sharpen the team's offensive and defensive coordination. Many players even train at home with their own goals, pucks, and sticks. Hockey is a very demanding sport, requiring around 15 minutes just to gear up and full protective equipment before hitting the ice for three 17-minute periods of intense play. Despite being a club rather than an official sport, the team thrives thanks to sponsorships from organizations and supportive parents. The Griffin, the Griffin hockey team's teamwork and passion for the game make them a standout group on our campus, proving that even as a club, our Griffins can compete at the highest level in athletics. And we actually have one of our hockey players here today, Stavati. I believe many of you, board members, are already familiar with this, but last Wednesday, the Los Alamos Improv Team held its district-wide show, where teachers and staff competed against one another in a night full of laughter and quick wit. Shout out to Dr. Pulver and Dr. Wieswright for being excellent and fair judges in the competition. In tradition, the show kicked off with the team captains Tom and Evan hyping up the crowd, leading them in a spirited rendition of Sweet Caroline, complete with the iconic "Bom, Bom, Bom." I gave it my best shot, but the enthusiastic students in front of me, who brought their own handmade signs, actually easily drowned me out. In fact, it was the first time ever that audience members brought signs to cheer on the contestants, a testament to how much our community supports the improv team. Following the sing-along, team members ran through the crowd, collecting donations to help fund their trip to Nationals, a summer event where students can pursue acting opportunities abroad. Then the games began. Teachers and staff from Los Alamos High School, LAE, Oak, and McAuliffe faced off in the first round, competing in classic improv games such as Human Props, Four Square, and doubleheader talk show. In the second round, teams from Rossmore, Lee, Hawkinson, and Weaver took the stage, each battling for a spot in the finals. Then came the ultimate showdown. Would the high school take, take the improv crown, or would our night steal the show? Both teams delivered hilarious performances, but in the end, our nights emerged victorious. It was a night filled with laughter, talent, and undeniably a sense of community, proving once again why our Los Alamos Improv Team is something truly special. Now, I'm sure all of you have heard this as well, but it was just so great, I just had to put it in my presentation. A boys' basketball team are CIF Division One champions. Good job, boys. The game was extremely close, a nail-biter to the absolute end, but the Griffins prevailed. It's not every day your high school is playing a Division One CIF final, so students and administration did all they could before and during the game to push the Griffins over the finish line. Knowing the game was to be hosted at the Toyota Arena in Ontario, the high school offered an excellent deal, which gave students the option of traveling in a Rooter's Bus, a Subway sandwich plus chips, and admission to the game for only $20. To give you some numbers, our students filled about two buses with around 90 students in total. We estimate that there were about 400 students at the game, however, with many making the long drive themselves. Additionally, from the students, there were tons of staff and even alumni at the game who came to support our Griffins, emphasizing how we are all Griffins for life. Multiple news reports also commented on how classy and positive our student section was during the entire game. This was truly a once-in-a-lifetime experience for our students, and surely a night they will never forget. And last, but certainly not least, let me introduce you all, if you haven't met him already, a Griffin who in my opinion is not only a super genius, but one of the most caring individuals you may ever encounter, Adam Cogan. Adam started out at Weaver Elementary and then attended Oak Middle School. Adam's passion has always been entrepreneurship, starting his first business as a baker in third grade with an operational website. In his time at Oak, Adam developed his very own fingerboarding company called Pydex, where in his own living room, he was using to manufacture fingerboards he would sell internationally. Many people also refer to Adam as Teen Executive because of his platform on TikTok designed to help others become more financially literate. In high school, however, Adam is best known for his snow sports club. He started his snow sports club sophomore year with a vision of giving any student, no matter what socioeconomic background, the opportunity to experience skiing or snowboarding. Fast forward today, his club offers financial assistance via partnerships with Snowstube and Big Bear, discounted rentals with Green Room, and has had over 10 trips to both Mammoth and Big Bear. Furthermore, there's not a flaw in Adam's academic record. I've even heard the title that he might be valedictorian. After Adam's incredible journey in this district, he's hoping to study economics at Stanford University. I always tell him this, however, wherever, wherever he ends up, even if it's not Stanford, I know Adam will make the most of any opportunity that is presented to him, because it is ultimately what you do in higher education that makes it valuable. And with that, I would like to open the floor to any questions or comments from the board.
I have a quick question. Thank you, as always, and it's great to have you here, Adam. The hockey, I remember when it was started, and it was started as a club sport. Do you know if it's a CIF sport now?
I don't believe, not yet, no.
It's still, it's still a club sport?
Yeah, it's still a club sport.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. And thank you all for joining me in today's student board report. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, just real quick.
Yeah.
Of course, I always enjoy your presentations. You're so articulate, and you really try to look at different things that are going on at the high school that we may not be hearing about all the time, and you really try to highlight those sort of unspoken heroes, and I really appreciate that from you. Of course, you know, I said hello to Adam. Congratulations. I thought Adam was here supporting you, which he is, and yet you are supporting him. And to me, that is the sign of a great friendship, and I'm just so proud of, of the work that you do, and also, Adam, hearing about you and all the great work that you've done and everything that you're involved in. I really feel like if there was an opportunity to sort of package up how you guys have figured out how to utilize, you know, what it means to be a Los Alamos, and really get the best out of your high school experience, I'd love to be able to just box that up and hand it over to the next generation, because I really feel like you guys have done it right. So thank you.
So much. Glad to do that. Also, I just want to give one more quick shout-out, the leader of our ACS Club, Spencer Beistrum, right there in the back.
I'm glad you caught him, because I was going to make sure that you did that. He snuck in, and he made sure to give himself a little thumbs up during the time. But I think you already have shouted, but I mean, to see hockey, I think hockey's still something in Southern California that just needs to continue to grow, so to see you all making the commitment. And I think sometimes when it is a club sport, they're so forgotten, and it's just as valuable. And a lot of these sports, when you go off to college, if that's something you're interested in, will continue to be club sports, but that shouldn't be a barrier for you to continue to do something you love and have a passion for. So I love that. Chemistry, never my, never my forte. So I, congrats on even taking on that AP that apparently teachers could not pass that exam either. So it's scary to hear how hard it is, and at the same time, I appreciate how many students are taking that on, knowing the challenge and the rigor of it. And I think that's a testament to our school, too, is that students say, I'm going to take this course, I'm going to give it my best, and whether they get a 29, they get a 40, they get a 10, we know that they have learned so much during that time, and it's, it's preparing them for college and beyond anyways. So thank you for sharing that, too.
Joseph, before you go, I think you need to update us all on your college decision-making process.
Oh, my gosh.
We're, we've been anguishing with you, so keep us up on it.
Yeah, so I'm still waiting for a lot of decisions this coming March. UC is UCLA, UC Berkeley, but I got a, as you all know, UC Davis a couple days ago, and I was chosen as a Regent Scholar, so I'm receiving a $30,000 scholarship from UC Davis. I'm very grateful for it, so, yeah.
Well, we're proud of you, and we're with you, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
And now we're moving on to our Superintendent's Report. Dr. Pulver?
Thank you, Madam President, esteemed members of the board. Great job, Joseph, as always, and as the board already shared. You know, when I think about whether it's this afternoon, when we had our Weaver students, and then they see tonight how you highlight just the plethora in different arrays of activities, from our Kindness Club to chemistry competitions, to hockey, and obviously entrepreneurialship and snow, snowboarding, snow, right? Snowboarding and snow club? Snow sports, there we go. When you think, think of all of that, it's the youth who really make me excited and passionate about what tomorrow will bring. Our future is in such great hands, and I'm so fortunate to be in a profession that really sees the, the positive things behind the youth, because we're really fortunate. We have such exceptional kids, and our parents raise really good kids. And I know tonight, we're also going to hear from some other great kids who I'm sure are going to make us proud as well, and when they want to share their voice during, during public comments. So we just have so many ways that we get to hear our student voices and how they're engaged, and it really is always uplifting and inspiring. So keep at it. That's why we're here. We're all here for all of you, so. I'm also really proud to say, I want to highlight one of our CTE pathways that we actually partner with North Orange County ROP on, but it's a class that's held at Los Alamos High School. Very few high schools have this program. It's an emergency response pathway, and they went through, Mr. Weatherman went, chose on his own volition to take this program that he runs at Los Alamos High School, to go through, I would liken it to a WASC accreditation, but for his CTE pathway of emergency response. So we actually, there was a lot of coursework that he had to, two days of conferences and a lot of writing and, and other things. And then they came out to validate. So we had people from back east, some from Fontana, I believe it was, who had to, and Florida, I believe, but I can't remember the other state, who came to really observe the class, observe the program, and to see if it was worthy of giving this recognition of what's called a National Program of Excellence from the Education Network. And sure enough, it did. So congratulations to this. And really what this means, it just continues to show excellence in pathways and programs that open more doors for our, for our students, because we know that that's what we're about is at a high school, is wanting to prepare them for what's beyond, whether it's a college and career. And they were sharing that in the EMT process, you have to be 18 to get your EMT certification, and you can get your EMT certification here, that they said, and one of the schools, I think it was in, somewhere in Boston, that it's almost a 0% of passage rate. And ours is over 70, it's nearly 80% passage rate. They said that passage rate for a high school program is just second to none. And so Ryan Weatherman does a great program, but it's really just the opportunities, and our kids were just pleased, and they have so many different ways to be connected. And I think he shares his own journey, he's committed to lifelong learning. He's right now trying to get AirMed certification, to be an EMT certification for, for helicopters. So just congratulations, and we're really proud to be a part of it and to partner with North Orange County ROP. And you can see a picture there from some of our board members who were, who joined us as well. On another note, we have an amazing, through our AXA, which is the Orange, which is the California School Administrators Association, they recognize, and then we have an Orange County cohort, they, a program that's called Every Student Succeeding, and it's really a program that tries to highlight students who have achieved remarkable odds and various barriers in, in life, and have, and has overcome them and has succeeded. And so each district gets to bring forward one student to, to recognize as their Every Student Succeeding. And last Friday, we were at the Bowers Museum, and Angelina Regalou, did I pronounce her Nast, I, super close, I apologize, Angelina, was our student who we got to recognize, and just, we could not be more proud of the accomplishments that she's had. She's been with us in our middle school and at Los Alamos High School. She's a senior, also in the drama, and does a lot of the stage production. And we also received word that Orange County gets to recognize one of those 28 students that was at that breakfast on Friday to represent us at the state, and Angelina was, was selected as well. So they got a Chromebook, they got a ticket to Knott's Berry Farm, and some other things, but really, it was just a great celebration to see their families also be able to participate in it. And we'll be bringing her forward, I believe, when the high school has their night, we'll be bringing her forward to recognize her. So congratulations, Angelina, we're very proud of you. And then I didn't get a chance at the last meeting, because there was so much in the Superintendent's Report, but I do like to highlight our Rock Stars of the Month. And so from, we're going to recognize our December and our January. In December, we recognized Kim Radford, who is at Weaver Elementary School, who's an instructional aide in our early childhood, Universal Transitional Kindergarten. She does such an amazing job, and so we're so pleased to be able to recognize her. And then Tomami Takuchi, who is a Japanese teacher at Los Alamos High School, she goes above and beyond constantly for students, and will find ways to differentiate, or there's only one Japanese teacher that we have, and so sometimes if a course doesn't work in their schedule, she's willing to let a kid come into a different course and customize that class for her, for them. So she just is amazing, and sometimes, another under-the-radar sometimes program, if you don't realize, but she's just such a great, phenomenal instructor who goes above and beyond for kids. And then last month in January, we're about ready to do our, we're always a month behind, because they're getting seeking nominations right now for the February. But for January, it was Katie Colstad, who's an amazing speech and language pathologist. She works a lot with our preschool, but also works in other areas as well, and she's just an exceptional individual. She was here earlier today, supporting Weaver, as part of the Weaver staff as well. And then we have an awesome athletic trainer, who's been quite busy with all of our sports and things. And so Tyler was recognized as our January Rock Star of the Month. So congratulations to all of our employees. And the great thing about the Rock Stars, they're nominated by their other employees, which is kind of neat. And as you already heard, so I won't go- And as you already heard, so I won't go as in depth, we had a Los Alamos improv show last week, but the great thing about it is it's staff competing against staff. And so it was so neat to see so many students and families come out, kind of cheering on their different teams. And this really was a concept that our improv coach, Mr. Barker, brought about last year as a way to try to help raise dollars, not for his students, but for our drama students so that they can go to the national over the summer. That's being, and so we raised over $5,000 in this, probably the most that they've ever raised. And it was just a great opportunity for us to be able to laugh at ourselves and see ourselves as adults. You know, we get to have fun and be silly too, just like our kids. And so I want to thank all of our staff who put themselves out there. And yes, congratulations to Rossmore Knights who took home the trophy on that evening. So, so great job at all. It was just a great night by all. And if you couldn't have been more inspired last night at our All District Choral Festival, there's probably something wrong with you. It was quite exhilarating, emotional, brings you to tears. This is something, and I think we're so fortunate to be part of a unified district and a smaller district where we have one high school, so all our kids land at the high school. So we're small enough to be able to have a district-wide choral festival that has really been, we're almost running out of space. We had to, we used the Cottonwood Auditorium and it actually sold out. We ran out, sold out of seats. But our elementary show choirs were there and I don't know if you could have fit another elementary kid up there on the risers. It was spectacular. And then to see our middle school show choirs all do performances. And they did a great video about our middle schools and our high school choir programs in between sets to kind of engage the community. And we got to see the competition set from our high school show choir. Our all-girls choir did phenomenal as well. And then all the girls, females, they did, for the first time, they did a common number. So K-12, or well, I guess it's really 4-5 because our choirs are 4-5 through 12th grade. And you could, that stage was packed. And then our boys did another number altogether from our fourth graders to our 12th graders with Extreme. And that was just a great highlight. So kudos, this community always supports the arts. It's really one of the As that we talk about when we talk about the four As. And then I love if they didn't get a chance to see, as we've been expanding some of our visual art programs as well, particularly with some of the Prop 28 dollars, we had a visual art showcase that was in the auditorium lobby beforehand. So parents and families could have come around 3:00, 3:30-ish, I can't remember the exact time. And then we had it still on display as they were coming in. And so just another opportunity for us to see another part of our As of the arts. And so it was really a fantastic and amazing evening. And we heard from some of our parents tonight who said, oh, my gosh, that was so magical. So great job to all of our students. Thank you to our music teachers and our art teachers who really find ways to engage and connect our students and ignite their passions. And then lastly, I just thought that I would share some, one of the ongoing committees that we have is, we want to work really well with our city's partners. And so we have, as board members, have committees because they can't all five serve on a committee due to the Brown Act. And so we have two board members who serve on a committee with the City of Los Alamos and two board members who serve on a committee with the City of Seal Beach. And we really just hammer out different issues and things to stay engaged and how do we stay connected? A lot of it always seems to be around safety in different areas. And so safety was one of them. We also talked about, so we met yesterday with our City of Los Alamos partners and the city manager and myself and our director of facilities and our CBO. And we typically have our safety director as well, along with two city council members. And so yesterday, we had talked about some of the agreements between the Oak and McAuliffe Lights. We talked about trying to understand what city, plans that the city has for their buildings and maybe a future pool that they might want to do. We talked a lot about safety and our SRO that the city is, we're so grateful that the City of Los Alamos provides. And then even as something as our bike lanes, and I know a lot, we've heard from a lot of people in the community, ourselves included, we're not quite so sure we think the bike lane right near the high school is the most, is the best way to apply a bike lane like that and maybe it's impacting traffic. We've seen some cars drive into those areas that, and so they're well aware of it too. Apparently, the city people have also been going to their city council and giving them a voice. So they're certainly expressed interest in finding ways to work around that. So we might see some changes there. And so it's just great partnerships that we have and important for us to work with our city partners. And two of our board members, I'm sure, might share a little bit more during their communication, but I think it's important for the community to know that it is work that we do is to engage with our city partners. So that concludes my presentation. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Dr. Pulver. We now move to board comments. And Mrs. Partizani, would you like to begin?
Sure, happy to. Thank you. So, good evening. It has been a busy month of fantastic student and staff recognition, arts and sports. I'm so proud of our students, our staff, our community for their achievements and the great energy and enthusiasm across the district. It's been an incredible month. Outside of the many events and activities, my focus has been in two areas, spending time at the school sites and going deeper with our district data and leadership team. So first, school visits. I continue to visit and observe at our schools and now I've had a chance to visit most of our sites, including all six of our elementary schools. And this is giving me a great perspective on how things are done on different schools and the areas of focus for each. One key observation I'd like to share is that regardless of the school, whether the seal is a sea lion, a tiger, a knight, a whale, a husky, a leopard, an eagle, a lion, a griffon, it's clear that you're walking into a Los Alamos school with high standards for teaching and learning and a high level of engagement and energy. And that is a testament to our teachers and our leadership at our school sites and for that, I thank you. Two, the district-level data and leadership team sessions. I spent a lot of time analyzing our district standardized testing results, the CAS. I am comparing results across the different sites and relative to other similar districts in Orange County to better understand patterns, where we are excelling and where we may need extra support. I had several sessions with district leadership to better understand our intervention strategies and practices, especially in light of the trends that we are seeing in the data, specifically around professional development in math and across school and department collaboration practices. Coming out of those sessions, I'm excited about the interventions that we have in place and I look forward to seeing the expected benefits for our students. And as I close, I'd like to highlight one of the many events that I attended this past month, which left me very energized. That was the Orange County, the OC Pathway Showcase. And for those of you who don't know, this is the intersection between industry and education. It's where students gain experience in their fields of choice through career technical education and come together to showcase their work. I was blown away by the hands-on, interactive, industry-specific work that was done in engineering, business marketing, film, robotics, and many more. And I got a chance to actually meet one of our STEM teachers, Mr. Miko, I'll give him a shout out, and I got my hands into a game of BattleBots, which if you haven't tried it, it was fantastic. We had three of our own students as ambassadors to the OC Pathways. They were proudly representing Los Alamos and I was so proud to stand beside them. And to that end, I ended up having a nice little chat with those students and our district leadership about how to create more energy and visibility behind our pathways. So I look forward to working on that. And with that, I will pass it back on to you, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hill?
Thank you. There has been so much this week, this past month, but a couple of things I would like to highlight and just to talk a little bit more about the city working group that we had. And it's very valuable to be able to sit down with the city's leadership and really understand what's going on and take concerns that we may have to them as well. And as I see some of our students coming in, one of the things that I was really grateful for was Chief Claiborne, when we talked to him about our immigration policy that we were bringing forward and how and where we would have support and things that he's hearing about out in his world and in the community. He really was so passionate about telling us that our students would be safe on our campuses and that if there was ever an incident, that he was certainly would be there and really talked about safe zones and what they mean and that they are still very, very active. And it came from a lot of communication that he's had with the greater Orange County area. And so I think that gave us a really great comfort, especially after I had the opportunity to go listen to many of our students really voice their concerns about the immigration policy that we brought forward. And it was more to do with what probably, I think, one of the students used the word thesis. They felt that our thesis wasn't broad enough. And a lot of that fell back on me and I really tried to take, explain my position and take responsibility for that. But I really believe that what we were looking at was every child and it was very clear what our responsibilities were, that we would clearly follow those. And then to have Chief Claiborne really back us up, that was very, I think, very hopeful for all of us. And so that was really aligned with Goal Three, where we're really talking about how we connect with our greater community and how important that is. I had several walkthroughs in the last month and all of them were absolutely fantastic. But I do have to say that walking into McAuliffe on a Monday morning and being serenaded by our choir and then making a spirit tunnel for us certainly sent my week off to a beautiful start. And to see the excitement in our young women's choir about their win, they had just won that past weekend. And the sense of pride that that comes from that and also being a woman that is a little longer in the tooth and been down, down the road a little bit and was a choir kid back then, I know what that did for my ability to be confident, to be able to stand up before a room and to not be afraid of public speaking. And so I see all those tools that they're learning and I'm just really grateful for them. And they're just really having a good time and that's a good thing as well. I also had the pleasure, some of you may not know that we have something called the Personnel Commission, and the Personnel Commission really helps us a great deal with our classified employees. And it's a whole system, it's a merit system, it's a lot to go through. But I'm really grateful to those, the three community members that serve on that. And Dr. Reeve Swite, you do a great job leading it and I'm just very appreciative of that. And so I had the opportunity to just bring them a plate of chocolate chip cookies and say, thank you very much for all you do. And you'll see tonight on our agenda, they've been very busy, very busy at work. So also the opportunity to go by the high school and hear from the WASC Committee, WASC Committee, was really nice to be able to hear. We went, I believe, for their findings. Some board members went for the morning or the introduction and we went for their findings. And they just couldn't have been more proud of the work that we're doing. And certainly there were recommendations, none of us are perfect, we're all trying to get from good to great or great to greater. And so we appreciated those perspectives as well from an outside perspective and the longevity celebration is. And as the students come in, I do want to say, and I'm sure we'll have an opportunity to discuss later, the amount of maturity and the amazing way that they were able to articulate their feelings and what they were trying to convey to us and where they thought we, as maybe some of the board members, were, weren't as aware of where they were coming from, was really tremendous. And I appreciated that time a great deal and was really glad for that opportunity as well. Thank you.
Mr. Foreman?
Well, I too looked back on the whole month and thought, oh, my gosh, this district is completely awesome. And where else would you find high school students engaged in Model United Nations, debating real-world issues, learning all about diplomacy? Where else would you have seen, as we've all talked about, a 4th through 12th grade choral music festival and art show that reinforces that the arts are important and very valued here? The Pageant of the Arts, you don't have to go to Laguna Beach, just go to McGaw School as they celebrated 42 of those pageants. And I want to compliment the board. A board of education that knows the value of attending a multitude of events and visit the classrooms to understand what it takes to bring a strong academic program to our students. Where else would you find a cafeteria staff that serves lunch in record time with a smile for the kids? Where else would you find an special education staff that deal with some very challenging learning and they don't ever say, we can't do it? They always step up. A sports program that wins big time, but it also involves all girls and all boys. And then last week, a high school STEM program that kids from high school go down to the elementary school and reinforce the value of STEM. A foundation that enhances the instructional program with up-to-date technology. And what better than to walk into a 4th grade class at Rossmore and see 4th graders beg me to come over and see their creations being printed on a 3D printer? Middle schoolers this week at McAuliffe, next week at Oak and all throughout the district are learning and supporting abilities awareness programs. And everybody learning to walk in other shoes, even the stickers created at Oak for next week have, walk in someone else's shoes. And that's a message throughout our district, begin to understand others. 5th grade teachers that will go up to camp, sleep away from home for four days and bring all that science learning to our kids. High school clubs, like Joseph mentioned already, the Kindness Club spearheading a book drive to support those teachers and kids that lost their books in the big fire. A career tech program that we've mentioned, student, giving students choices as to their interests and future success. But to see them get on screen on Instagram and each one from a pathway share all about it, when you hear another kid talk about it, I think as a kid, if I was a kid, I'd say, oh, I might look into that. And then I'll finish with, what better example of this unique, wonderful district than the improv production? And it was so great to see the camaraderie of classified admin teachers onstage, all taking a huge risk. I was going to suggest we do it one time, but I decided I'm not doing it, so whatever. But I was so sat there just in awe, so we have an awesome school district. Thank you.
Mr. Bragman?
I like to do improv, but not, not, not in these things. This is the one place in my life where I like the script. So I'm going to go ahead and recap a little bit, and a lot has already been talked about, but over the past month, it has, I mean, the past month is in dog years, I feel like it's been like 50 years. I don't know when I'm getting a day off. But over the past month, I've had the privilege of attending events that truly showcase what makes our district so special. We've heard, this is a very special, one-of-a-kind place. The creativity, dedication and community spirit that help our students thrive. I want to share just a few highlights that filled me with pride and gratitude for being a part of Los Alamos, both as a leader, I know I talk about this at every meeting, as a leader, as an educator, as a dad. At McGaw Elementary, I experienced the magic of the 42nd Annual Pageant of the Arts. I'm willing to admit it, it was my first time attending. I don't know how I made it this long, I'm getting faces from the crowd. It was always something that I allowed my daughter and wife to go to, it was a very special thing they wanted to go to, it was a date thing, and so I've never been before. So I got to go and I was blown away. The students brought famous works of art to life through stunning performances and visual displays, showing not only their incredible talent, but also the teamwork and passion that make arts education so vital. It's events like these that remind us how creativity enriches our schools and shapes well-rounded students. I'd also say, even the way in which we choose our artwork, it's replaced and to see Banksy reflected this year, to see Banksy and see the powerful movement that we're teaching our students about, I think is just so special and understand the social dynamic of art and how it impacts culture across the world. I was also blown away by the students at the All District Choir Show. We talked about this, Weaver was here doing a little rehash of Man in the Mirror tonight. We have been seeing that in our house, I mean, for long before All District Choir Show, but that's happening a lot more now at 6:00 AM, we're doing a lot of Michael Jackson in the house. Hearing the harmonies fill the room was a powerful reminder of the dedication of music educators and the joy that comes from the shared artistic expression. I have to shout out Ms. Reed, I know you were there, setting that up, working so hard, flexing, changing, doing things to adapt that. to adapt that room. It was a special place. I know I brought my in-laws and said, they will never go to Segregstrom again. They're just going to come to our events. So that's great. Probably cheaper, too. And that's great for them to be able to be there and understand they're going to get the same quality they'd get on Broadway, seeing our high school students, seeing our middle school students, seeing our elementary students, 4th and 5th graders. It was unbelievable, the pride that we saw up on that stage. Safety is always something I talk about. I talked a lot about that during my campaign. And so this was not a Los Alamos Unified Initiative, but I went to the Seal Beach Police, had a surviving gun violence session that was hosted in McGaw, that was really open to the whole community. And so I would just say, to hear from the chief, to hear from Captain Nicholas, to have Yosa there, I know I came away feeling better as someone that feels like I'm pretty prepared for those types of things, having not been a part of a school shooting or a community shooting. But it's touched our own community. The most deadly occurrence of a shooting happened in our community in Seal Beach. And to know that our police, as we already heard, both in Los Alamos and Seal, are preparing us and also teaching us, what do you do when something happens? What do you do in a school board meeting when something happens that you don't expect? And so I know I came away from that session, both feeling a greater sense of support from our community, but also knowing how I can support our community, how I can have conversations. I know Dr. Pulver and I talked about, what are practices we can do to make sure that we ensure our schools, our community, our district office is the safest place possible for anyone that's here, whether it's board members, visitors, students. So I know that was something that was very uncomfortable. I would tell you, anyone, they, they host us every year. There are videos shown that are real-life events. It is not pleasant, but I would highly recommend if you can go, go. And if you don't feel comfortable, talk to someone like me. We'll happily share some of the things we learned from that. Last Friday, I was able to attend the Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce luncheon, which was really a special way of connecting local business leaders and sparked really meaningful conversations. I know I learned a lot from our local business leaders. I've learned places I can go that I didn't even know existed in our community when I need something, but also knowing how they're going to support our schools and our districts and our students. I had conversations about internships and ways that we can get students involved in, in job experience there. I also say that selfishly, this was a really great meeting because we got to hear from our own football coach, Coach Ray Fenton, who spoke about the impact of sports on building character and resilience. He spoke a lot about John Wooden's practices. We talked about them earlier with Weaver and Dr. Schmidt, who talked about how that's such a key part of the foundation of what they do at Weaver. And so how we can reinforce extracurricular activities, but how it also builds on quality kids in the classroom and building a community-based program, which I think is so powerful. We want to see our friends, our neighbors, their kids out on that football field. We want to be cheering them on. And that might be the football field, the choir, the improv show, anywhere else. Visiting school sites, I also am almost done checking the box of getting to visit all the sites, but it's not about checking the box. It's about getting to know our schools. And so I think for, for us new board members, we learn so much visiting sites. And so over the past month, I was able to visit Hopkinson and Los Alamos Elementary, which was interesting. These are schools I have seen from the outside and never been on the campus before. And to see them firsthand, they were vibrant, they were engaging, from the little CDC students up to the 5th graders. It was so special. I know we were, lots of reading, Read Across America Week going on, lots of reading, lots of playing, lots of getting to see the Bald Eagles being born, me teaching kids about the Bald Eagles and why I spent too much time watching that video. But it was really special. And I think one of the things is we saw academic excellence and a focus on student well-being and a focus on creating a safe and comfortable learning environment that really encouraged students to be their best and authentic selves. So I really was appreciative of that. I think we heard that again from Weaver. High academic standards, but building the best kids we can. We want Los Alamos kids to come out well-rounded and quality students who are going to be the leaders of our future. And they really already are our leaders. So these events really provided me a great glimpse of the heart and strength of our district. I'm incredibly grateful. I know I say that, I think, every time. I'm so grateful to be able to be up here. It's a privilege. It's an honor to be able to represent our students, our teachers, our community. And so I know that Los Alamos is a very special place where students can dream big and achieve amazing things. I know we'll continue to work. We will do things right. We'll do things wrong. We'll adapt. We'll be flexible. And I think being responsive to students' needs is so important. And so even again, as I think it's been previous, I know we're going to have some conversations today that will be challenging for some people. And I'm really excited by that because I think we will grow and be better based on being challenged. So I'm appreciative of that, and I appreciate the opportunity to share.
Thank you. The good part for the audience about me coming last is there's huge slashes because I'm not going to be redundant on everything everybody said. But there are a few topics that I wanted to focus on and one or two that will be new to the, to the discussion. First of all, I want to welcome every student who has come tonight to speak in a few minutes. We really treasure the fact that you are taking your evening to come here and share with us. And thank you, Mr. Sales and Mrs. Vena, for, for what you've done to create an environment, a safe environment in your classrooms where students are, are comfortable sharing what they feel, they've learned to respect one another and to build upon each other's points of view. I was with Mrs. Hill. Only two of us can come because of the Brown Act. So I really hope that you will give other board members an opportunity to, to listen to you, because that's what we need to do is listen. And I would love to come back again. Your points of view were incredibly powerful. You started everything off thanking us for being there. You were respectful, but you were strong. You made it very clear how you felt, and you supported it with evidence and with your beliefs. If I've turned off the television all the time because adults twice your age are not capable of carrying on a conversation, a debate like you are. So please, never lose those skills and spread your power through the world. We heard what you said. We learned from your points of view, a different perspectives than what we were thinking. All of us want what's best for you, but sometimes we need to hear from you what's best. And that was really a powerful moment in time for us. And I too heard Chief Claiborne, who reassured us that he would be there, even if he was off duty, he could be called if there was a problem. But I, I think that he really believes nothing will happen. But just like my daughter-in-law, who really struggled to send my grandson off to kindergarten because there'd just been a school shooting, she didn't, she said she didn't know if her son would come back. We can reassure you and make you, and tell you over and over again, the world will be a safe place for you. But I know in your hearts, you, you don't necessarily believe that. And we are here to strengthen your stand and support you. So really thank you, and looking forward to hearing from you. So I'm going to move along because you're next. I wanted to go back to, Mrs. Mrs. Hill mentioned the WASC accreditation. It's a big deal. Our high school recently completed this accreditation process with the Western Association of Schools and Colleges. That began in August of 2023, and it involves the entire campus for that period of time. Teachers Maria Kipta, Kiptya, did I say that right? Kiptya. And Lori Franzine co-chaired the 2025 cycle that included multiple committees, committees headed by teachers from across the campus. They met before school, after school. The community was involved. It was a powerful process. The committees were made up of administrators, staff, and community. It was an honor for me to be, serve on one of the committees that analyzed instructional practices, addressed potential needs, and created possible solutions for improvement. The final site report has been submitted, and WASC site visit was in February, as Mrs. Hill alluded to. The, the report left by the visiting committee was very positive, served to confirm the improvement areas as identified through the work of the focus groups. The visiting committee submitted their, their report and recommendations to WASC. We are eagerly, and this comes from Mrs. Franzine, eagerly awaiting the, the final level of accreditation they will award us, and they're feeling very optimistic about it. So thank you to all who participated in this WASC program. It is a gigantic effort, and it takes a lot of follow-through and time outside of class. So it's deeply appreciated. We, time and again, after these WASC accreditations, are, are told just how wonderful all of you are. So we're very proud of our high school, our staff, our, our families, and our students. And then I also wanted to talk about a special award that's coming out. The North Orange County Regional Occupational Program, that's the ROP program, for which our district is a member, presents a yearly award to an ROP student from each of the districts. A couple of weeks ago, I got to sit on a part, a pan, be a part of the panel that interviewed these candidates from Los Alamos and Brea Linda School Districts. Each student, like all of you, displayed an amazing level of knowledge, passion, and poise. On April 3rd, at the ROP Celebration of Success, truly extraordinary ROP students, one from each district, will be announced as the Celebration of Success Student of the Year. And I really look forward to the student from our district who will be awarded that honor. I look forward to sharing it with you at our next board meeting. I also wanted to say, congratulate Mr. Weatherman for that incredible award of excellence, and to the students who do so well, to, to score so highly on tests that other, other schools can't get an, even a 10% passage rate. These students go on to be EMTs or to pursue other areas of medicine with a strong foundation that comes from this ROP program. I think that we also need to really thank the North Orange County ROP itself, because they have provided incredible funds to us. And there is literally an ambulance inside the classroom, if you haven't been in there, that rivals any fire academy. So I'm deeply appreciative to the ROP program for that, that, too. And with that, I am going to say, I appreciate you thanking so many of our staff members and all of you for what you said. And I'm going to close, and we're going to begin the, the public comment portion. Okay, so, we have six cards, so I'm going to read a required passage. The board welcomes input, input from the public. This is the opportunity for community members to provide public comment to, to the board on agenda items or items not listed on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the board should complete a speaker request card, you did, prior to the start of each meeting. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of three minutes. Public comment is limited to a total of 30 minutes. Comment cards will be submitted to the, can be submitted to the district office anytime after 9:00 AM, the day of the board meeting, and will also be accepted at the start of the board meeting at 6:00 PM. Thank you for getting all your cards in a timely manner. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another. When addressing the board, speakers are requested to address the board from the podium, state their name, and adhere to the time limits. The board may not take any action or discuss any item not appearing on the posted agenda and cannot immediately respond to public comments. That's hard on us. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or deflamatory comments regarding any person simply because those comments are made at a public meeting. And with that, we'll get started. You just come up with, to the podium, and you'll have the three minutes. Our first speaker is, and I may not get your names pronounced exactly right, Sophia Swigart.
Hello, my name is Sophia Swigart. Thank you for having me here. I'm a senior at the high school. And I'm here to discuss your policy response to immigration enforcement, which had a crucial, which had crucial language removed. And the original statement made a large group of students at our school feel not only safe, but protected. And I understand that the removal of this language was to kind of neutralize the board in regards to politics. However, the protection of students is not and should not be seen as a political statement. You, you have also discussed that the specific language should be taken out because you want the district to know that all students are protected, which is undoubtedly true. And I think it's also clear in the beginning of the policy, which says that the board is committed to the success of all students and that every school is welcoming to all students. But I think that including the irrespective of citizenship or immigration status will give students who are directly affected by this reassurance. And removing that crucial part of this policy would also send a strong and negative message. And I understand that, like, seeing this perspective might be hard, but put yourselves in the shoes of the students who are affected and consider their feelings. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Our next, our next speaker is Valeria Murelo. Murelo?
Hi, my name is Valeria Muriel. I'm currently a senior in high school at Los Alamos. And I just wanted to start off by saying, thank you for having me here today. So with these policies being removed, I just want to say it hurts me as a daughter of immigrants because I understand, you know, everything that people have to go through. And people should not be fearing for their life just for going to school or having a fear, or just not feeling that reassurance that they'll be protected in schools. And I feel that if, by taking away those policies, they're not only harming students and their well-being, but also, you know, the district, because the average daily attendance goes down, which, you know, they make less money with that. And also, with these rules, like, being removed, it's also going to encourage people who don't agree, that's going to encourage them to bully immigrant students even more. And the district doesn't seem to care until these students go home, and then they don't feel good about themselves, and then they're gonna, you don't know if they could harm themselves. You don't know if they could even go as far as committing suicide. It's already happened in Houston, Texas. A girl who was in middle school, she committed suicide because she was being bullied for having an undocumented mother. And this should not continue to happen. And with these, with these rules being removed, it could encourage that. And I completely understand trying to neutralize everything because, especially in such a district where we have people from all sides of the political spectrum, you know, we have very right-wing people, we have very left-wing people. And I completely understand that. But I feel that human rights or not fearing for your lives at school, I don't think that that should be something political. And I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Lucy Rios. Lucy?
I'm Lucy Rios. I'm a junior here at Los Alamos High School. And I really appreciate that you guys give us a space to actually say what, or for students to speak on what they believe in. So I just want to start with that, with the thank you. And I just believe that the eradication of the last part of that policy is just very, it just goes against, I think, what school should be about. Since it's something that's like, it's, you have to legally go to school, I just think that a school should be a place where students are the main priority. And I think taking that away is just not, it just, it, not that you guys are doing that, but I think it gives the look that you might just value the look of how you guys present yourselves rather than just having, like, student feelings. And I think regardless of image or connotation, a student's well-being should be the school's number one priority. And it just disappoints me that that was ever not regarded as something that was the most important. And I just think that family, less student and their family's safety should be the number one priority. And I believe that taking that out looks like something else. And it's, and you don't know what students are going through at home. And it's just really important to have a space where students can feel like they can be themselves. And that's about it.
Elena Elliott?
Hello, my name is Alana Elliott. I'm a senior at Los Alamos High School. Thank you guys for welcoming us. And regarding the policy about immigration and citizenship, since the discussion around creating that policy was about immigration, I think removing those specific words at the end is sort of pointless in protecting the students that need help. Now, although me, I'm not personally affected by ICE coming on campus, hundreds of other students are, and they are scared of coming to school. And by law, they have the right to have a protected education and should not feel scared to come to school. And so when some members say that they are, like, concerned over their reputation or image regarding the public's, like, reaction to this policy, it seems concerning because that is not your main priority. Your main focus should be the students that are affected by ICE coming on campus, such as children of immigrant families. So I just believe that they should be your main focus and that no matter what side of politics you're on, every human should have compassion and understanding for others. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Alexis Lameli? Alexis?
Hi, I'm Alexis Lameli. I'm a senior in Los Alamos High School. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to share my concerns. I'm here to discuss the language that was recently removed from the policy on immigration enforcement. The previous sentence stated that- The previous sentence stated that every school site should be safe and welcoming place for all students, their families, irrespective of their citizenship or immigration status. As a student, I have learned that the importance of a strong thesis statement. It should be a broad overarching statement that covers the entire argument of the policy. It should make it clear that it is about the immigration and citizenship status. My ethnic studies club was recently told that the language was removed due to its political nature. A school board statement about keeping students safe should not be political, but unfortunately, that is not the state of politics today. But that makes these words all the more important to keep. By erasing them, we are cowering down to people that do not want children to have the freedom to go to school without the fear that ICE will one day choose to target their school. These words, which make it clear that citizenship and immigration status do not affect students' safety and learning. They take away the freedom from our marginalized communities and make it explicitly clear that they are safe to learn and be a part of the community. The task of the school board is first and foremost to provide the children at our school with a safe place to learn. And whether or not students feel safe at our school impacts how well they can learn. Immigration status should not be political, but they are. So by taking away these seemingly small words, it seems to me like you think that political confrontation is more important than the safety of the children at our school. Thank you.
Thank you. Melina Limon?
Good evening, honorable board members, and thank you for having me. My name is Melina Limon and I am a senior at Los Alamos High School. As we all know, last month, the policy 5145.13, response to immigration enforcement, was voted on. Watching the board meeting, I felt hopeful at first, seeing all the board members agree on prioritizing the safety of Los Alamos students. However, it was suggested that the quote, irrespective of their citizenship or immigration status, be taken out of the first sentence of the policy by board member Mrs. Hill. She states, there's no question that we are to support all students and keep them safe, which is the bare minimum and has always been enforced. By taking out this language, we are generalizing the statement when it needs to be specified to help and show solidarity with minority groups who are being targeted during this difficult time, with ICE raids being more common and some students even being more afraid to come to school in fear of encountering ICE officers. We know Los Alamos wants to strive for equality among students, but it's time we offer equity to students as well by helping communities of students who have been more targeted under new immigration laws going into effect. On Thursday of last week, around 25 other students and I had the privilege of talking to Mrs. Hill and Mrs. Davidson about this policy change. In the response, we were told that removing the language was done to prevent people from complaining about it or protesting it. But who are we trying to protect by doing that? And why is it so hurtful to keep this language and actively protect students that are being targeted? In addition, Mrs. Hill stated that the board meeting last month, that, as a board, this, that first paragraph is our voice. So what exactly are you all saying when you want to take out irrespective of their citizenship or immigration status? In 2018, the city council of Los Alamos voted to opt out of California Sanctuary City Law, allowing Immigration Customs and Enforcement, otherwise known as ICE, to work with Los Alamos Police Department, setting a reputation for the city of Los Alamos and its values. The city council then repealed this in 2020 due to a lawsuit that came about from this vote and not out of its own desire. While I would like to acknowledge the difference between the city council of Los Alamos and the Los Alamos District Board of Education, I want to note that every member of this board will have the opportunity today to state their commitment to their students. You will have the opportunity to show the world, but most importantly, the students you respect, that all children irrespective of their citizenship or immigration status are deserving of a safe education. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. Pulver, did you want to give any clarity or tell what's going to happen?
Uh, yes. So this is an item that board members can speak to because it's an agendized item, but you just can't speak to it now. The, the item does come up under 11E. Thank you. And so that will be shortly because the consent item usually goes pretty quickly. So if you want to stay and hear the board discuss that, any board policy does take two readings. And so the last board meeting was the first reading of, uh, the board policy on response to immigration and, um, enforcement. Tonight would be the second reading. Should the board, uh, want to continue with the current policy as stated, or if they want to make any amends or changes to that, um, you can make so whatever you approve tonight will be the final board policy. Um, so it doesn't need to come back for, for a third.
Mrs. Hill just had a suggestion. Could we move it up and address it now?
The board absolutely could.
Do you want to move it before consent?
It's, it's, anyone, it doesn't matter.
Do you want to move it before consent? I, um, so then I will make a motion that we move 11E before consent items, which is 10.
I'll second, oh, you get that.
Any discussion?
Because our students need to get home.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The motion carries five zero. So I would now like to make a motion, we are now moving 11E up. It's the second reading and this time the approval of new board policy 5145.13, response to immigration enforcement. I would like to make a motion to accept this policy with, but add return to the original writing irrespective of their citizenship or immigration status.
I second that motion.
Do I have discussion?
Yes, please. Thank you. So I, I just say it, I will absolutely vote for this policy. I will not go back on what I truly believe. What I believe is, is that we are making this a political issue. And to me, this board is supposed to be nonpartisan and we are supposed to protect every student, every student regardless. And so I feel really strongly about that. But what I also feel really strongly about is that I feel strongly that we are in a democracy. And, um, we brought this policy forward. I brought a suggestion. We had discussion. The board thought that it sounded reasonable. Then we heard from our constituents that there was concern. And I know in my heart, I know by this policy, whether it's one or the other, our students are going to be protected and safe. But do they feel safe? Obviously not. And that is something I cannot live with. Do they feel heard? I want you to feel heard. So what I'm doing is taking a backseat to what my beliefs are because you are a strong voice and I want you to know you're being heard. And I think that's really powerful. And I think in this life, there are times that you will also do this, where you will be heard, but it may not necessarily go your way. And I want you to be prepared for that as well because that's what's happening to me individually today, right? So, but I hear you and I can tell that there is a feeling that you are not safe. And it is my job and my responsibility to make sure that you are regardless of anything else. But once again, this is a nonpartisan board and the last thing I wanted to do, I think somebody said that, um, how we would present ourselves doesn't have anything to do with us presenting ourselves. I'm a really strong woman and I can talk to anybody about anything. It is about protecting our district from going through a time where we are having political upheaval when it doesn't belong in these chambers. It doesn't belong on school sites. It doesn't belong on these chambers. So, um, I really respect democracy and I respect the process that we're going through. Um, and I will always have students, um, families and staff at, at my heart. And I just wanted to make sure that we were really clear about that. Thank you, Mrs. Davidson.
I just, yeah, thank you. I, I, thank you for those words. I, I also want to add that, uh, the, the importance of what you've done is that all of us can have the best of intentions, but we still only have our lens, our limited perspective. No matter how hard we research something, no matter how much we think about it, we have to hear other points of view and they need to be presented in articulate ways that don't, there was nothing about anything you guys, any one of you said that was confrontational or made me feel defensive. You were very respectful, but you were very strong. And I hope that going forward, other, that you can be a model for other students in, in this process of debating and finding compromise. It was exceptional. I, I taught American history for 25 years at McCullough and I used to tell my students, the most important thing you can do is to take a stand, but when you take your stand, present your position, listen to the other side, try and hear if there's any truth or try to understand why that person or group feels that way. Then take that information and maybe not find compromise, but find understanding and eventually you'll find resolution. That's what we need to do. That's what you've done. I absolutely had no intentions of hurting or causing fear in anyone. Neither did Mrs. Hill, neither did anyone in this board. I don't think we saw the, the significance of the statement in the way that you did. And you have shown us that and that's powerful. So at this, this change is, we have, that's why we have the two, the one meeting to the next. It's presented for reading. Most of the time, nobody reads it except us. You read it and you acted. And that's why you had that period of time to talk with us and then come tonight to speak. And you honored the process and we're honoring you in this, in this change. So I thank you.
Ms. Davidson? So first of all, I want to thank you all. I, for the six of you to get up and present yourselves the way you did was strong and heard. And I know that six of you got up there, but you represent so many more students than just yourselves. So I, I want you to understand and hear how much I respect the way you did that and to hear the passion in your voice and that fear is real. Um, as a principle where many of my students, not that many years ago, felt the same way and didn't come to school the day after an election. And I couldn't tolerate that as a principle. And so I have to own my own responsibility in terms of our conversation. I think sometimes it is important for us to recognize the place of privilege we come from. And that's difficult to say and oftentimes to admit in a room like this for people to see. Um, but I don't have fear when I send my daughter off to school in the morning. I know she's coming home at the end of the day, right? Like, that's not something I'm worried about and that's privilege. And so for you all to make your voices heard, and I did hear from some of you, I believe, I heard from other folks that emailed me, I heard from teachers, I heard from parents, I heard from other people. Please know we always want to be responsive. I so appreciate, again, this process. And I know I said while I was running for this role, that students will always be number one. And if I ever lose light of that, I hope I will be challenged. I hope that board members will challenge me. I hope students will challenge me, teachers, parents, whatever it might be. Um, we're always learning, we're always growing. I said that, I think, initially as part of my, my board member communication, but I think that we will be better, um, having heard your voices. And so this is a learning experience and a growth opportunity. I talked to my daughter about growth mindset. I think it's an opportunity to grow and continue to reflect. I also would say that this is something where we, I, I can't make assumptions about what the vote looks like actually, because we haven't voted yet. But if we vote and something changes in the future, that's also an opportunity. We can always come back and change things. We can amend policies. And so I think if something happens in two months, something changes in terms of dynamic of the world, um, your voice will continue to be loud and heard. And so please continue to have the conversations with us. I know I've talked to staff members about coming to visit and having our ears regularly. I think it's important because it makes these conversations more authentic. We become partners and not just a student board member relationship. So, um, please keep being the strong, powerful students that you are, young adults that you are. You will be off in college for many of you next year and your voice will be loud and heard. But we're proud of you. Honestly, I think that this, this has made us a better district, having had this conversation no matter where we fall.
I couldn't agree more, more and more with the statements made. I've been in public education for over 50 years and this is the process that should happen. And I applaud you for the way you presented it and what you opened my eyes and my ears to. So thank you all.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to echo that. I, I really want to start out by saying that I, um, commend you for coming here tonight and for speaking your minds and be heard your heart. And like, uh, board member Bragman said, I know that you're here representing yourself, but you're also representing many other students and that takes courage. And I just want to say thank you for that. I do want to commend the, um, and, and applaud your staff, the teachers that encouraged you to be here and the culture that we've created in this district that really rewards that type of standing up and, um, having your voice heard and respected. And the fact that you gave that same type of respect to board member, um, Davidson as well as board member Hill. I also want to commend board member Hill because she was open, demonstrated what a caring, um, and, uh, concerned board member looks like. She had a point of view. Uh, she came and listened to your point of view. And from what I understand, we haven't voted yet, but she heard you. And I feel, I hope that you took away that as, that you were impactful, that you did your job right, but also that you have board members here that are here for the benefit of you, for us to create an institution where you feel welcomed, you feel safe, and it is prioritized on learning. So, thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The measure carries five zero. Thank you so much.
Shall we go back to consent? Okay. So I make a motion that we go for consent item A through P and R through AI.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries five zero.
Madam, madam president, just a point of clarification, you did go ahead and prove the consent item, but we missed item number nine, information presentations, which is presentation of supplemental materials.
Oh, we need that.
Oops.
Oops. So we'll come back to 10Q?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Just to keep our, our agenda as much as we can in line.
Poor Tina.
Thank you. Hi, Joseph, congratulations. We're proud of you.
Yeah, great job. So I make, uh, oh, I don't have to make a motion, we just go to nine.
Okay, so we are now going to do a presentation of supplemental materials. Mrs. Reed, I apologize for that.
No problem. Thank you so much, President Davidson. Tonight, we're bringing forth AMIRA. AMIRA is actually already included in our adoption from Hoot and Milford Harcourt for interreading at the elementary level. However, because we want to bring it forward as a possible screener to meet the mandates of Senate Bill 114, the dyslexia screening mandate, we're re-bringing it forward specifically to be used as a dyslexia screener, um, which it has been approved by the state of California and it is on the approved adopted list. So we'd like to bring that forward tonight and it will sit on public preview for 30 days to add it to the list of screeners that we have access to when discerning dyslexia in our youngest students.
Quick comment, I thought, um, we saw it in use at Rossmore. Um, and I was really, it was really great to see, to be able to see how it was being used. We also saw another pilot that was going on at McCullough. And so it's really nice to be able to walk into the classroom, um, and actually see things that we're looking at or just recently adopted or are piloting and going to adopt. Thank you for that. Thank you.
If I can just echo what Ms. Hill said, I think it's important, Ms. Reed, you and I, I think, spoke about this previously, but, uh, when Ms. Partisani and I were at McGaw about a month or so ago, um, seeing AMIRA in action was something that we had teachers raving about. And we saw classes that were using that as something they were being responsive to. I think an interesting thing to point out is the way in which you're using it to be able to reflect and listen back to recordings later on. And when it helps with the screener, it's going to be a, a great asset. I also just think it's important to point out, um, we have conversations, we'll probably have future conversations around AI and how it comes into play in our classrooms and in our schools. This is a beautiful use of artificial intelligence. And this is a tool that, that when people are learning about how it can be an asset to our teachers and our students in our schools, I just think if people have not heard of this program, to look it up, learn more about it, because it's a great asset, it's a great tool, and it's, um, it's providing an ease of access and an ease of a resource for our teachers. So I'm excited to, to continue to explore it and then to hear it under consideration.
Thank you. So we're moving on to Q.
Now you're back to your consent item that was pulled.
So I pulled, actually pulled 10Q. So do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion for 10Q.
Okay, so my reason for, um, pulling this item is just for my own information that I wanted to, to give you the opportunity to have the answer shared with you. Um, we are given the agenda, just like the public, on Friday, sometimes earlier, but Friday, and we have the opportunity to read through it. Um, and if we have any questions, we present them and we get answers. So I had a question about this particular amendment, which is a memorandum-
So I had a question about this particular amendment, which is a memorandum of understanding with the Orange County Superintendent of Schools for Strong Workplace Program 12 K-12 Pathway Improvement Grant, OC Pathways Service Agreement focusing on K-8 Career Education. Well, whenever I see grant, I get really excited. And I was curious with the topics that are listed within the MOU as to how it was, the funds are being used and would be used. So I got a fabulous answer from, was it, from Mrs., oh, from Mr. Bennett, and I'm going to read the answer to you. I asked him how the funds are used. Strong Workforce K-12 Grant Funds are linked with a career-aligned initiative. The initiatives are developed by OC Pathways, the CTE Division of the Orange County Department of Education, and are one way we partner with the county to develop CTE Opportunities K-12. In this case, the initiative goal is to build career connections and skills in middle school courses. That is very exciting to me. All disciplines and courses are eligible, not just classes taught by a teacher with a CTE credential. Mrs. Davis and Mr. Bennett will work with both middle schools to fund career-connected training, field trips, and other resources. So at a time when our budgets, our budget's being cut and we're trying to figure out best use for every penny, I'm so grateful to our cabinet and to all of the directors and the departments that worked to get these grants, because they provide the opportunity for programs that enrich students' lives, give them passion, and also light up a path that they may decide to take. So I'm very grateful, and I'm also very thankful that you always give us such excellent answers to our questions in a very busy work week. So thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries 5-0. We now move on to action items. Am I right?
Yeah, 11A.
Okay. So 11A is the second reading and approval of a revised board policy. Dr. Pulver?
Thank you, Madam President, esteemed members of the board. This is, I don't know if you want to take them all together, they're the second readings. Did you want to lump?
I think we would like. Do I hear a motion?
I think I'll also move that we do 11A through D as one item.
Go ahead and do the. I second.
Any discussion?
So there's a few different item policies there, but no changes were made from the first reading that was made at the last board meeting on any of those policies.
Any discussion? Have you talked about the one that was most important to us?
Yeah.
That's excellent. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries 5-0. We are now moving on to approval of supplemental materials. Do I hear a motion to Group F through J?
So move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Reed, would you like to talk about these for us?
Thank you so much, President Davidson. Yes, we're bringing forward tonight, after 30 days on public preview, a novel in both Spanish and French. Spanish and French, wow.
It's Tuesday.
I'm expiring.
Tuesday.
And both Spanish and French to be used in our foreign language courses at Los Alamos High School, as well as the three other dyslexia screening tools that have been approved by the state of California for action this evening.
Thank you. We did a motion, right?
We did it first and second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries 5-0. We are now moving on to second reading and approval, oh, no, we did that one, approval of Los Alamos Unified District Reading List of Grades 3 through 12. Mrs. Reed?
Thank you so much, President Davidson. I know I was absent at the last board meeting, so we tabled this item until I could return. This list has sat on public preview for over 30 days. However, I also want to reiterate that all of the books on this list have been previously board-approved at some time, but the nature of bringing forward this list this year was to be very transparent in what students are reading within classrooms, but also to get some easily referenced dates for many of our classics. So prior to our district unifying, many of our high school books were under Anaheim Union. As we get requests for when board books have been taken action, it's almost entirely difficult for a book that's been used in high schools for over 50 years for us to be able to easily reference that date. So to also make sure that our records are accurate and up to date, we brought forth our entire list for the board's consent again.
Do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Thank you for doing that deep dive. I'm sure it's really fun to go back into the Dark Ages when I was young. So.
No discussion.
No? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, we are now on 11I. This is a very lot of, we are on 11I, Presentation and Approval of L, Presentation and Approval of 2024-25 Interim Report. Mrs. Schmier? Here? Sorry.
Schmier. Oh, boy.
Thank you, Madam President, esteemed members of the board, Executive Cabinet, Dr. Pulver, and guests. It's truly an honor to be here today to present our 2425 Second Interim Report and Budget Adjustments. First and foremost, I would like to shout out our Fiscal Services Department. They've been amazing these last couple of months, really supporting me to make sure that we get this interim report done on time and presented to the board for approval. So thank you very much to the amazing team that's our Fiscal Services. I presented this slide last, last time we did the first interim, and where we are now is obviously in the second interim, which is our actuals and revenue as of January 31st, as you can see in the little circle. The next item would be developing the budget and our LCAP and waiting for the May revision, and then we start that cycle of developing the budget for '25-'26, and we continue on. In the second interim, we are bringing forward our revenues and expenditures as of January 31st, 2025, and then we pretty much revise our projections for the remainder of the fiscal year. As you know, the interim reports are really to certify that the district can meet its financial obligation for this current year and the two subsequent years. I want to bring forward a little bit of an overview of the 25-26 state budget. As you know, the governor introduced and proposed is its budget on January 10th, which included $118.9 billion for TK-12 education. This year in '24 and '25, as well as '25-'26, the governor is really being conservative in the amount that he's allocating to TK-12 education. Primarily, he's not really budgeting the full entire minimum guarantee that is based on the calculation. As you recall, in '23-'24, his calculations were a lot higher than he anticipated, primarily due to the property taxes being delayed. We anticipate that that's going to happen again this year, and therefore, he's being conservative. So the $118.9 billion is lower than the minimum guarantee calculation states for both fiscal years, '24-'25. We hope that once the year for '24-'25 ends on June 30th, that once he knows the actual revenues that he anticipates to receive, could potentially bring us a little bit more money, and maybe '25-'26, we could see a little bit more. But it is really difficult to tell until we know what his state, the full state's revenue looks like. As far as COLA, 2.93 was the number that we were using at first interim. It's gone down to 2.43. Proposition 98, Rainy Day Fund, as you recall, in this year, '24-'25, the governor swept the reserve level that was there because of his overappropriation in '22-'23. He is trying to bring that rainy day fund back in, so he's allocating $1.5 billion in '25-'26 to bring that reserve back. This allows for that 10% trigger not to be effective in '25-'26. Some of the key investments for that fiscal year, '25-'26, is $2.4 billion in universal TK implementation. And as you know, that is really to continue with that full implementation for students that turn four years old by September 1st. In addition to that, $1.5 billion is allocated for the TK class sizes, reducing that from 12 to 1 to 10 to 1. $435 million is for the expanded learning opportunity, and $106.3 million is for universal meals. What we are doing is really not allocating these additional investments, because we don't know if they're really going to come to fruition until the May revision or until we get closer to the fiscal year, developing the '25-'26 fiscal year. The only item we are accounting for is a reduction in COLA of 2.43.
So the universal meals, that was something that went into effect in COVID, and he's been keeping it.
Yes.
But.
The governor keeps on adding it to his budget, but we don't know if it's really going to happen until it actually happens. So as I mentioned, also in our first interim, we use budget assumptions, and this year for second interim, the highlighted red items are changes from our first interim. As you can see, for '25-'26, we've reduced the 2.93% COLA to 2.43. And then in '26-'27, our COLA was projected to be 3.08%. Now it's 3.52. So what the governor did is pretty much lower '25-'26 and increase '26-'27. Obviously, that can still change. It's still just an assumption, and it's still just a projection. Our STIRS, SUI, Health and Welfare, and Health Enrollment Projections stayed the same. They're in black, so they're not, there's no change. Where we did see a small increase is in our projected P2 ADA, primarily because we've already completed our P1 report, which was due early January. Our rate did increase slightly from 95.42 to 96.47, so that's really a good, good indication that our students are actually showing up to class. So that increased our projected ADA, and therefore, it increases the following years, because we use the same rate in our projections for the remainder of the two years. As you know, we are funded, yes.
Just a quick question. So where it shows enrollment projections, negative 189, and then it projected current year P2 ADA, negative 134, so we've, that's increased?
So in our, in '24-'25, our P2 ADA, we have 8,431. It's negative 134 ADA compared to last year's. Last year's '23-'24, we went down 134 ADA compared to '24-'25.
Compared to '24.
So for '25-'26, we anticipate to have 184 less ADA compared to '24-'25. Because of our reduction in declining of enrollment, our ADA is also declining. So if our enrollment declines, our ADA declines.
Okay.
So it's just comparing from one year to the next.
Okay. Is that, are we comparable to other districts? Is that, are we doing better or about the same as any other district?
As far as ADA, our rate of attendance, it's actually a lot better than other districts. I've heard districts are really struggling with like 93%, 95%. So even us, 95%, getting close to 96% was one of the highest as far as Orange County. Getting closer now to 97%, it's actually really good. But we'll see once P2, we'll see a variation in P2 ADA, so, and that's how we're based on, based on P2, but we're using P1 numbers.
I think it's important to, I mean, just to credit also our staff and our admin, who are encouraging kids to get to school. I notice we see that when we visit sites. There are incentives, there's ways in which we're celebrating students be there. I also know realistically, this has been a nasty flu season, and so hopefully, our P2 numbers are okay, but like, this has been a rough go for the past couple of months. So I think that's a nice bump, and then hopefully, we can keep it, but also knowing where, what we might see when we do that.
Absolutely. And that was one of the criterias in our criteria and standards in the report that you all have, is it asks, in the past, in the last few years, it was 95%. Now you've gone up to 96.7. What caused that change? Because it checks to see the differences in a percentage, and it saw an increase compared to our previous year. So obviously, my explanation was that our administration, our teachers, our parents, our sites are encouraging families, and we're communicating how important it is for students to come to class and our ADA and how it helps promote educational programs, and we get additional funding. Our LCFF is based on that, our supplemental funds are based on that. So I feel the communication that we've done has been very, very helpful.
But I also think we have to really thank our labor partners as well for having calendars that really give the opportunity to have the breaks where we have seen that in the past. So I appreciate that they, their partners in that as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. Our duplicated, UPP, our Unduplicated Pupil Percentage, has increased slightly. Once we finalized our CALPads data, which was certified early February, early February, I believe, we went up slightly due to an increase to our free and reduced population. And then I updated, didn't increase much, once we added the different COLAs, the rate of attendance, our entitlement per ADA is a little under $12,000. So I've brought forward this slide multiple times where I talk about our CBID's enrollment numbers and how we've declined and where we anticipate to be in the next three years. So in '24-'25, our enrollment is 8740. We anticipate to be at 8,363. Then our actual P2 ADA numbers, as you can see, they're lower because it's usually, it's the 96, 97% based on enrollment. But we are funded based on the average in the next three years. For this year, we started the average last year, and we're continuing to use the three-year average going forward. Where I want to bring your attention is really on the '26-'27 fiscal year. As you can see, the funded ADA, which is our green line, is higher than our enrollment, and that is because of the three-year average. So that three-year average is really helping the districts with the funding. Otherwise, we would be receiving either 8,247, which is '25-'26 ADA, P2 ADA, or our, that current year, which is 8,065. So obviously, it's really helping the district getting that three-year average. So at second interim, what we do is compare what first interim numbers looked like, and as you can see, this is unrestricted general fund only. Our beginning fund balance was 11, a little over $11 million. Our total revenues, which includes LCFF, federal and state and local revenues, increased by $317,000. That increase is primarily due to interest that, like I mentioned in the past, we don't account for interest increases until we actually see it. I don't want to, I want to be conservative and assume a lower interest rate from the county treasurer's office, so that I, I'll bring the adjustments once we see it. We also saw a small increase in the LCFF because of the increase in rate of attendance. When it comes to our expenditures, we increased by $302,000, and that's primarily at, at second interim, we started looking at where we are with our subs, our teacher subs, our custodians, any overtime, and we adjusted as we go forward. Obviously, we start conservative, but we needed to make those adjustments and include some of those additional expenditures at this time. But overall, because we had an increase in revenue, we have an increase in expenditures, our net effect in our fund balance is 14,958. Normally, at second interim, we don't see a whole lot of changes. Most of the changes come in first interim, then we start adjusting, small adjustments throughout the year. Where we'll see most of our changes is in the restricted side. This, as you have, I've mentioned before, these are categorical programs, which are specifically funded programs designed for specific education, education, student population and educational programs. So they're geared specifically for a purpose. They're either a grant or an entitlement, and therefore, we have to account for them specifically. So as you can see, our beginning fund balance is a little over $14 million, and because we have a fund- And because we have a fund balance, we start allocating, allocating some of those funds throughout the year, once we know how those funds are going to be allocated. A lot of the times, these funds are for three or four years or two years. So we don't spend all of it or we don't allocate it all in one year. We spread it out. So therefore, you'll see an ending fund balance that remains as a fund balance because we might only spend $500,000 one year, then another $500,000 the next year, and so on and so forth. So our revenues increased by $771,000. The bulk of it was a small increase in Title I, Title II. We also had donation funds. Last board presentation I brought forward, our forward funding, that's the bulk of it. $450,000 is due to our donations from, that we received last month for forward funding that will remain in the fund balance for next year. Our expenditures increased by $3.7 million and that is primarily due to, we anticipate a math adoption. We anticipated to happen this year, but I think the committees have not been established and we don't anticipate that to happen just yet. But we were trying to be as conservative as possible, maybe designate the funds for the math adoption. If it doesn't happen this year, we will definitely roll over those funds into the next year. And we're using unrestricted lottery funds for the textbook adoption. Another big portion of this $3.7 million in the restricted side was, as you recall, the arts music discretionary block grant. We have $5 million there. We are now starting to bring forward some of the contracts for the PAC renovation and $1 million was for the architectural fees that we brought forward last month for beginning those design phases of the PAC renovation. A lot of other, the educator effectiveness grant, we had some carryover funds, we're starting to allocate that, as well as the Prop 28. As you can see, the arts are thriving at the schools and they're starting to use the Prop 28 funds to bring those programs into the classrooms. So some of it was Prop 28 funds that we're now starting to allocate. Overall, as you can see, from the $14 million that we had as beginning fund balance, we are now at $9.5 million. And like I said, a lot of it is the learning recovery, the arts music block grant that are going to be most likely carried over into next years. So in the multi-year projections, as you know, we have to have a multi-year projection to ensure that we are meeting our financial obligations. So overall, unrestricted general fund at the top, which is the green section, is our total LCFF, federal, state, what we anticipate we'll have for revenues and then our total expenditures. Overall, in the unrestricted general fund, we anticipate $137 million for 2425 and then 2526, $136 million and $139 million for 26. Keeping in mind, these are just our best guesses based on the assumptions that we're using. When it comes to our expenditures, both unrestricted and restricted, we have $105 million in expenditures and $103 million. This is where we're going to start seeing some of the reductions that we have in place to meet our financial obligations in the next, in the next couple of years. Here's our reserve levels. Our beginning fund balance for 2425 was a little over $11 million. Where I want to bring your attention to is our net increase or decrease in fund balance, which is our deficit spending, the $4.4 million. That's our deficit spending and that's where we really need to focus on and that's where we're trying to reduce, right? That's where the county is going to look, the state's going to look. If we were to continue to maintain that deficit spending in the outward years, we're going to be in big trouble and we wouldn't be able to meet our financial obligations. So that's where we need to, we needed to bring forward a reduction plan. I believe last year, at this time, is the very first time we brought forward a reduction plan. We started just having those discussions and how we were going to try to minimize our deficit spending going forward. And here we are now with our plan and we've done a lot of work going into this fiscal year of 2526 to make sure we meet that, decrease that deficit spending. So as you can see, $4.4 million in 2425. Obviously, we hope that that number doesn't quite turn out to be 4.4, maybe $3 million, maybe two hopefully, but our best guess is 4.4. And then in 2526, $1.9 million in deficit spending. And then with the reductions in our expenditure plan, we hope to have $390,000 in, keep in mind that in the outward years, we do have a higher COLA in 2627. We anticipate a 3.52% COLA, which could change that number if that doesn't come to fruition. Overall, we do have a reserve, a required reserve of 4.56% this year and then in the 2627, 3.08. Then once we add Fund 17 to our total, we're at 8.33 and then in 2627, 6.53%. So I love this slide because I stole it from Dr. Wiestreich. I saw it in one of his presentations and I said, I'm going to steal it because it really goes with the story and our budget. And as you can see, our declining enrollment from 1819, we're at 9,730, whereas right now, we're in this year, 2425, 8,740, which equates to 990 students. That financially equals about $11 million. That's significant. And so when I saw it, I said, you know what? I'm going to add it on to my presentation because I think it's important. This is something that the county will, would be nice for them to see because they're going to ask for my presentation and, you know, it would be nice to include it. He's going to talk a little bit more about it because he has it also on his slides. I don't want to steal too much of his thunder.
Ms. Schnur. I think, just to point out, because I think that is a really good visual to just show it. Not a good visual, but it's a visual. It's a visual. And so I think that that's important to just to note that I think this is not happening in isolation. I think it's just important, and when Dr. Wiestreich talks about it again, but declining enrollment is something we're seeing. And when I talk to friends in other districts, administrators in other districts, board members in other districts, every district around us, every district in California is losing students. Outside of very few where there are new population centers, new cities growing, things like that. But to see that, it's not surprising and to see those numbers, I think paints a really real picture. But I think it's important to note that this is just the nature of the beast, that people are leaving our areas, people are moving to other regions outside of California, outside of these urban centers. And so I just, I think that's really important to note. I appreciate this visual. I appreciate that Dr. Wiestreich will speak to it again, but it's not a good visual. The reality is we have to learn how to manage the fact that our public school population is shrinking and that's going to impact our fiscal situation. And I think we're learning lessons from other people that have seen this happen sooner than we have, maybe in LaSalle, because we saw this in other districts like Los Angeles Unified on a much larger scale. But students are just not here anymore. And so how do we, how do we change and adapt to a smaller population? Thank you for sharing that.
And with that, particularly as you shared, it's partially, we don't live in a community where there's many new housing developments. So some communities right now, there are low income housing developments or low income seems such a, moderate income housing developments, et cetera. And we were landlocked and this is a very expensive area as interest rates have gone up, people aren't moving as much as well, they're staying in their homes. And so California is an expensive place to live and when you don't have more land development, you have less options. And then our neighboring districts where we get inter-districts, we draw enrollment from other districts, they've gotten tighter on releasing because they too are experiencing this decline. And so it's not as easy for a student outside of a district boundary to get released. They still can, but they have to go through more hoops. And so that has the trickle down effect to us as well.
Dr. Pulver, a quick question on that. Are there specific programs or events that we're anticipating or that we're working on that may impact enrollment? You know, may help reverse or at least stabilize it that you can talk about?
Yes. Well, one, we've been continuing to do enrollment campaigns. So we have been partnering with Target River. The first year we embarked upon that, we actually stayed flat, which was a huge accomplishment because we were projecting to be down almost north of 150, I think, at that time. Last year, we did the enrollment campaign as well. We're still down. We are doing that enrollment campaign here again this year. So we always hope we do better, better than that. But we're always also looking at how to draw in new programs, whether it be taking a look at, you heard Mrs. Davidson talk a little bit about doing some of the CTE at the middle schools and how we can expand certain things there. We've had conversations in cabinet, taking a look at how can we expand CTE at the high school beyond the 17 pathways that we already have. Universal Transitional Kindergarten is growing. And so next year, all four-year-olds by September 1st. And then I just think the amazing partnerships that we have with LEAF that allows enrichment opportunities for students, et cetera, I think can help the free world language, et cetera. So, and being, I think what helps us too is, you know, we continue to be one of the number one performing school districts in Orange County, usually number one in the LA and two or three in math, depending upon the year or the cycle, I think that helps too. But I think it's also the focus on the whole child and our focus on emotional wellbeing, but really the connectedness and that this community has big dreams for their kids. And so if you want a place to where your kids are going to thrive and have loving, caring adults, LaSalle is a great place for them.
Thank you. I have to say that I think one of our smartest moves as a board was creating Nicole's position because it has made such a difference in getting the messaging out and reinforcing all of the good things that are happening. I love it when I see them on TV too, when a message gets out on television so that we can even get more publicity. But that was a really smart business move besides bringing joy. So, thank you.
I think one other thing, just that came up in a conversation visiting a site recently also, is the fact that we do have outstanding athletics and arts programs and students don't have to go elsewhere. Students that are vocal performance majors of the future, singers, dancers, choir, you look at our choir performance last night, no longer have to say, I have to go out to some other conservatory. They can stay right here in our district and we have unbelievable world-class education experiences, but also art education experiences too. So I appreciate that and I think Nicole is a big part of that also, promoting it and seeing it and what Ms. Reed did last night in our all district choir and things like that. But athletics and arts are such a support to academics and make it so students don't want to go elsewhere. They want to be here, homegrown in our district or students are trying to come to our district. So hopefully that'll help stabilize as well as we continue to support those programs.
Thank you. The next slide, visual actually, also stole from Dr. Wiestreich, so thank you very much. As you can see, our, the enrollment, this is as a percentage of change. So if you look at the bottom of the black line, I believe it's black. It's, that's our enrollment and it's declined 9.49%, 5%, and the red line is our certificated staff, which has also declined about 15.9 FTEs, 5.83, 61% overall. So obviously, as our enrollment declines, our certificated staff declines as well. So we reduce FTE based on the number of students that are no longer with us. Where we've seen a huge increase is in our classified staff. And what Dr. Pulver has mentioned multiple times is how do we right-size our district? Where it gets really difficult here is we've seen programs where we are forced to hire new employees. For example, the ELO program, the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program, universal meals has required us to hire additional staff. UTK has, we've had to hire new staff as well as our special education program has increased. So we've had to hire additional. So that's where it gets really difficult. So overall, we've increased 110 FTEs. And this is where it was really good to see in a visual how different it is our enrollment and our certificated staff compared to our classified staff.
Yeah, Mrs. Schnur, I just want to comment that this picture is worth a thousand words. I do love this slide. I think it really depicts year to year where we've gone and how we've been able to keep up with our classified, I'm sorry, certificated population, where the classified has just continually grown.
Absolutely. So as you recall, at first interim, I indicated that at second interim, the county office was going to require the board to have a fiscal solvency. So I've created this little template or this little paragraphs to really, our commitment to making sure that we do meet our financial obligations. So the statement says, "As part of the 2425 school second interim budget preparation, the board reaffirms its fiduciary responsibility to ensure fiscal solvency for the current and subsequent two years. To address the financial challenges, the district's budget stabilization plan includes non-personnel cost reduction, personnel reductions, and structured timelines for ongoing budget planning and actions. These strategies are based on the current state budget, anticipated revenue losses due to declining enrollment, student enrollment, and rising operational costs. Given these factors, the board projects the need for a $2.7 million budget reduction for 2526 and additional $1 million in 2627 to maintain fiscal stability." I felt it was very important to include this little last paragraph. "To mitigate layoffs and minimize the impact of position reductions, the district has approved a supplemental early retirement incentive program, which aids in workforce reductions through voluntary retirement." So that, really that retirement incentive has helped in making sure we have less of a layoff impact. So this is our budget reduction plan that I've included in our second interim. Non-personnel reduction, supplies, contracted services, and transfer in that I'm still including, based on our first interim, is $450,000 from Fund 17 transferring in and additional reductions in contracted services and supplies. Management staffing reductions is $300,000, classified staffing $600,000, certificated staff $7 FTEs, and that's because of our reduction in projected students. And those are the numbers that we anticipate of reducing our budget in 2526 and 2627. We're trying our best. So what's coming up? In May, the governor is going to propose this May revision. As you know, the May revision is yet another opportunity for the governor to revise its January budget. By then, the governor should have better state revenues, therefore being able to give us a little bit more accurate numbers to budget for 2526 and prepare that budget preparation. We'll have the opportunity to update. We'll already start developing our budget in April, but once the May revision comes along, we'll update those numbers. And in June, on the 10th, we will be bringing forward our estimated actuals and our 2526 proposed budget. And then the board will then take action on June 24th to approve the budget for 2526. And with that, I thank you very much. And if the board has any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Will. That was amazing. It's not, it isn't fun, I'm sure, but you're...
Well, I'm handing it over now to Tim.
And he hasn't run out the door yet.
Mrs. Schnur, sorry, just one more question. If you go back to the budget reduction plan slide, you know, can you help kind of explain? I know these are just projections based on what we know and I know that it's primarily based on the decline in enrollment, but can you touch on the fact why it's blank under the non-personnel management and classified staffing, that we don't have any projections for 2627?
Well, as you can see in, let me just bring forward that other present right here. Sorry. For 2627, our deficit spending is anticipated to be only $390,000. If I reduce more expenditures, which we could in order to bring our reserves higher, that could also be a discussion later on down the road, should that come to fruition. Should we need to make further reductions? We will. Based on where we are now in 2526, if we continue to make reductions, it's really tight right now when it comes to supplies, contracted services, it's really tight. It's like bare bones. So that means reducing more supplies for the sites, maybe reducing discretionary allocation. So maybe really looking down into contracted services and how we can minimize those contracts. So I feel like in 2425, 2425 and 2526, we've really down, gone down really hard in contracted services and supplies. So that's the reason why in 2526, we're hoping that the COLA does come to fruition as far as a 3.53%. Should it not come to fruition, then we'll probably have to start looking at additional, more cuts in the 2628. We just don't want to assume additional cuts when we don't have to. Does that make sense?
I'll add, if you can go to the budget reduction plan.
Sure.
Slide. So one of the things that we've really talked about as you, and when the layoff resolution comes up shortly, one of the things that we've really been talking about with our staff, with management, et cetera, is that this is not something... staff, with management, et cetera, is that this is not something, doing a layoff and a reduction of employees is very hard on culture. And so we've really been, as Mrs. Schnur shared, we've been talking about this since last year. So we've really spent the year to really plan about how we're going to make the budget reductions to right-size the district. But we also said, we need to make sure we make the right reductions now, so we're not doing another layoff next year and the year after that. And so we have to make sure whatever downsizing we are making, it will afford that opportunity. And so the reductions that we're making that will be future on the board agenda shortly is really to be able to limit that, so we don't have to do another layoff in '26-'27. Where you see reductions in certificated, as you see on that other line graph that we had showed over the past few years, that as our enrollment has declined, we've naturally reduced our certificated employees, mostly by our retirements. Every year, we have eight or nine certificated teachers who retire. And so we haven't, we haven't had to do, and I'm really pleased tonight, we don't have to do a certificated layoff for the most part for our teachers because we've been able to balance that with the retirements. And then when we need, let's say, at the elementary school, there was 25 teachers there that one year, and now this year, there's only 23, we've been able to reduce those without reducing a body because of the retirement or sometimes also with our temporary employees. So that will still go on as, because in that '26-'27 school year, the enrollment is, student enrollment is still expected to decline, we hope that doesn't happen, by just under 200. So our certificated number of classrooms will be less, but we think we can accomplish that through our retirement or through our temporary employees. But we don't want to have to do another classified layoff next year as well. I think that's really hard on culture. What we always do, and what we've been doing since last year, as we knew that these budget reductions were going to need to be taken into effect, is anytime there's a vacancy, we really assess as a team, do we need to fill that vacancy? So we'll continue to do that in '26-'27 as more opportun, because in the budget plan you have, we haven't budgeted for a pay increase for employees in the next two years, and we're going to have to hopefully be able to pass a cost of living increase to employees over the next two years. So we just don't want to have to do another layoff. So we want to make the best decisions we could and spend the year really doing that to avoid that happening in the next year.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification, extra explanation. I appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion for approval?
No.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you. That was really so, such a great explanation. And now, you're back on stage again. We now are doing the appointment of members of the Los Alamos Unified School District, Facilities Improvement District, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Mrs. Schnur?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We are bringing forward recommendation to appoint three amazing new volunteers to our Citizen Bond Oversight Committee. We are bringing forward a business representative, his name is Eric Johnston. He's new to the committee, so thank you very much. A senior citizen group representative, Donna Artukovich, oh my gosh, she's new to the committee, thank you. And then we have a parent, Christine Coxhill, who's going to continue and doing a renewal for another two-year term. Every member has the opportunity to do three two-year terms. We had three that are termed out, so we're bringing forward for approval so they can start helping us out with the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for approval?
I will move to approve those three new members.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just how do we typically go about finding them?
I advocate, I beg and I plead no. Yeah, we usually ask a lot of people, or I passed Andrew to speak to the chambers and I've asked Ryan to help, and just people that may know, that could be interested in being part of the committee. We advertise it as well, we advertise it and we write up a little something about it and put the application out on our website as well.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Artukovich has been on the school board. She's a drama teacher at the middle school. She's been president of every PTA in existence, so she will be a wonderful member. She never stops giving. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries 5-0. We're now moving on to an adoption of Resolution 2024-25, elimination and reduction of particular positions, classified service. Dr. Weisright?
It is not an enjoyable topic, and it was, obviously, we spoke about it during Ms. Schnur's presentation with the second interim. But tonight, we are going to be bringing forward resolutions for classified layoffs, which are about 21 different positions that are going to be impacted, and certificated layoff as well. But before we do that, I wanted to share with the board exactly what the district has done to navigate these layoffs, the information that's been shared with employees that are impacted, as well as our continued plan for supporting these employees. So as Ms. Schnur shared, we did tell our, we, sorry, we gathered all of the employees together for a group meeting, anybody who's been impacted by the layoff. And this is the information that we shared with them so they could understand a little bit of the story about why we got here. And so the declining enrollment, as we spoke about earlier, is pretty compelling when we talk about almost 1,000 students that are down over the last six years and the change in revenue from $11 million. And then when we look at, again, the staffing ratios, really looking that we've increased our classified staffing by 35% and 110 FTE. And speaking with our employees, that doesn't mean 110 people because a lot of our classified positions are part-time. That's when we combine all of those part-time positions to have 110 full-time equivalents. Meanwhile, we're down about 16 FTE for our certificated staff. And so the numbers are part of the reason, as we've talked about many times, that we do need to have a staffing reduction so that our enrollment matches our staffing, and we haven't been able to meet that with classified. In fact, the numbers just continue to go up. Fortunately, the supplemental retirement program that was approved in February did offset a number of the layoffs. So we did have 40 employees take advantage of the supplemental retirement program that was offered by the district. And from those positions, the following are not being replaced: seven certificated staff, one certificated management position, and seven classified staff. And because those positions are not being replaced, that mitigated the number of layoffs that we needed to bring forward tonight. And so we are very grateful that the board took action on that. And our partnerships with both LAEA and CSEA, we're also very grateful for that as well. So communication, our discussion about this really began with CSEA over a year ago, with LAEA as well. We just knew that CSEA was going to be impacted the most, and we really value the partnership that we have with CSEA, with our union leaders, both here locally within our district as well as at the chapter level. And we really wanted to communicate that this isn't being done, you know, quickly. It really is a longer discussion. It's something that is very difficult for each of us to navigate, something that's very difficult for our supervisors and our managers, our directors, our site leaders to navigate, because these are people that we really do value as part of our Los Alamos family. And it's very difficult to stand up here and recognize great employees of the year and have these celebrations, but also know that, truthfully, it's not personal, but we can't maintain our current staffing with the funding that we have. And so we do get to share that heart piece of it with our employees, and I don't know that that makes it any easier. None of this is ever easy, but it is an important story for them to hear and for them to be told. As I shared, they were all invited to a meeting on February 27th where we met with them as a group to share kind of the process for the layoffs, what the layoffs looked like, to educate them about their rights. And then HR's been having one-on-one meetings with any impacted employee who wants to have a one-on-one meeting, and most of them have taken advantage of that. So we could talk through their individual situation and their options and what their next steps look like. And then in some situations, we have had to loop out and have entire staff meetings or meet with leadership teams at the different school sites to talk about how a change in a position at their school site might impact them, hear their concerns, make sure that they have an opportunity to weigh in and articulate to us exactly what they foresee being potentially problematic with a change in any of their staffing. So employees will receive, if the resolution passes tonight, one of three notices tomorrow. All of our layoffs are not effective until July 1st, and I think that's an important point of clarification. I know, we all know that, but not everybody does understand, these layoffs don't go into effect until the next fiscal year. And so our employees will get one of three notices. One, indicating if they, that their position's being laid off and they do not have seniority, so that means there is no bumping available to them. An employee who does have seniority, notice type number two, does have bumping rights, and that means a more senior employee can take the position of the least senior employee within a classification that's under our merit system. And then lastly, a notice to an employee who may be displaced by a senior employee. And so if you're somebody who's less senior in a classification that's being impacted by the layoff, you get a notice saying that your position may be impacted if somebody who is more senior opts to bump or displace you as a result of the layoff.
May I ask a question?
You may.
How, when do they have to notify you if they want to bump?
It's a really good question. So there's not a hard deadline on notifying us. However, in working with CSEA, it really is in the best interest of all employees for those decisions to be made in a timely manner. And so we kind of have a collective group consensus that we are going to make those decisions quickly so that people know how they're going to be impacted and how this will affect them.
Good, thank you.
You got it. We also spoke about transition support, and so this is information that we share with them. So any employee who is laid off are placed on a 39-month reemployment list for their classification, and they'll be given priority for rehiring before an external candidate is considered for that position. So that's three years and three months. And if rehired during that time, that employee will maintain both their seniority and their prior benefits that they had at the time of the layoff. And that is also part of our rules and regulations from the Personnel Commission. Laid-off employees may also accept a lower classification or a reduced hour assignment. So if they choose to bump into a position but the hours are less, they still retain their spot on the 39-month reemployment list. And if they've taken a reduction in hours, they actually have 63 months in total where they're on a reemployment list, where they could be restored to their original hours if that position becomes available. And then any employee who is rehired off of that list does not start a new probationary period, they're a permanent employee with us once they come off of that reemployment list. Additionally, we have continued employment opportunities, and so any employee who's impacted will be considered for substitute, temporary and short-term assignments within their classifications, and they have an opportunity to share that with us once they receive their notice. And then new job opportunities are always being posted on losal.org. So we are still doing recruitments for instructional aides in special education, EDCC assistance for food services, and then other new positions as they come up or potentially people retire and there's vacancies. We want to help make sure that employees have not only knowledge of, but support in applying for other positions within the district.
Dr. Weisright?
So, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Question on if a staff member is laid off and it's within that 39 months, is it their responsibility to continue to stay in contact, update us? How do we do outreach to them to say there's a position? Do you want?
Yeah, so we have to maintain that list, and then if a vacancy occurs, our office reaches out proactively to them.
I guess a follow-up is, do they have a certain amount of timeline in which if we make an offer within that 39 months, they have to tell us yes or no?
That's a good question. I don't know that there's a timeline, Dr. Pulver, to you for when they have to respond.
I don't think there's a timeline. I think it's pretty immediate, but what Dr. Weisright will share is that they can't deny, if they've denied it three times, then they come off the list. So if we've offered it, reached out to them three times over the three years and three months, or three times over the five years, then they come off the list.
Yeah. Ms. Hill, do you have a question?
I did. So when it says that they have access to substitute, temporary, and short-term assignments, there are no benefits that go along with that, correct? Those are strictly hourly?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Additionally, we shared three big transition support options that employees have access to. And so eligible employees may continue to participate in our Classified Summer Assistance Program. We are one of the only districts in the county that continues to do Classified Summer Assistance year after year, which provides state-matching funds for employees to get them through like the summer gap months if they meet a certain income threshold. And so that opportunity was open to them as well. Also, we give them the information for accessing the unemployment, California unemployment, as well as COBRA. So if they're going to experience a lapse in their coverage because of an adjustment in their hours or their position, they'll be able to work directly with Elvia's office, actually, to talk about COBRA and continued insurance options. Any other questions?
I think this isn't a question as much, just to say, I very much appreciate the thoughtful and talk about the Los Alamos family, the way in which we are trying to make sure that we do this in the best way in a really difficult situation. I've shared this with other board members and staff. You know, I left the teaching field and became an administrator because I received layoff notices two years in a row as a teacher, and it was frustrating and it was difficult. And to get a layoff notice and not know would I have a job or not each year, I never had someone like you communicating with me, what were my options, what were my chances? It was just your number and you might find out you had a job or you didn't. And so I know this is difficult and it's, we hate that we're in this situation. I think we're not surprised that we are, but we are making the best of a very difficult situation. And I hope that any staff member that is bumped or that receives a layoff notice understands that we will do anything we can to try and keep them whole and they will be a part of this family. And that also, I think, is really important because if they come back within 39 months, we want to make sure they come back knowing that this culture, we'll wrap our arms around them like they were never gone. So thank you for, thank you for doing that, for you to be the person having those conversations. I know you were offering yourself for one-on-one conversation with every single person impacted. That's a huge amount of time, but that's the amount of time we need to spend to invest in our Los Alamos family. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. All that, it's very taxing on your heart, I'm sure, to do all of this, and you do it with such kindness and professionalism, so thank you. So this is a roll call vote. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Angelo?
Mrs. Partasani?
Aye.
Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Forehand?
Aye.
Mr. Bregman?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. We're going, we now go back to Dr. Weisright for the adoption of Resolution 2425, elimination and reduction of particular kinds of services, certificated, and so...
Yeah, similar to the previous resolution, our classified resolution contained 21 positions. Our certificated resolution does contain two positions, one and a partial one.
Thank you.
I just want to add on the certificated, this one's really has not due to budget, this is due to our student demand scheduling. So at the high school, we have a CTE program that is, right now currently has six sections, a teacher who teaches CTE, and the demand for that is less than full-time and so, but that means demand for another CTE pathway might actually increase. Our biomedical pathway is exploding. We went from one teacher to two teachers, and so, but because they have a very narrow credential, that's why that, the very laser-specific CTE, certificated, it's not our general, our regular education teachers. And then it happens to be an assistant principal at LAE is the other position. A lot of people always ask, are you cutting management? As well, as you saw, we're, the management position, we're not replacing through the supplemental retirement program, and then another management position at LAE. The enrollment numbers at LAE are lower than when we added the AP there. And when the assistant principal position was added to LAE several years ago, we were using Title I funds to fund a portion of it, but the Title I funds are no longer being used for that because they have other needs for those Title I funds. And so as the enrollment declines at LAE, we are making some difficult decisions to go down an administrator there.
Thank you for that explanation. Do I hear a motion for approval? Do we already do that?
We do. I'll move.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Partasani?
Aye.
Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Forehand?
Aye.
Mr. Bregman?
Aye.
Thank you, 5-0. We're moving on to approval of positions, and do I hear a motion to combine P through AF?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I was just going to say, I just really appreciate all the work that went into this. I think sometimes job descriptions can stay stagnant, and I think it's really healthy to look at them and make sure that they're appropriate for those positions.
That's, and I, you know, I don't want to rain too much compliments on him, but this is not from me, but I think it's important to share, I was with David Boyer, a member of the Personnel Commission on Friday, and he said that your coming to those meetings and helping facilitate those meetings has been a breath of fresh air. So I think that's important to say from a former board member who sits on this commission, he wanted me to make sure I shared that with you. And now...
The motion carries 5-0. This is another, one of the few joyful moments in our meeting tonight. Yeah, acceptance of donations. This community is incredibly generous, and it's why, a big reason why we can provide so many wonderful programs. So, and we have a total of, for this donation time, $92,595.46, and that's in tough times with the economy. So thank you, community, for a total up to this, for this year to date, $823,246.27. Absolutely amazing. Do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll move. I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries 5-0. Dr. Wieswright, you're now going to address personnel reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we have our classified, certified, and administrative personnel reports that reflect the updates and changes since our last meetings, and we recommend approval, last meeting, excuse me, recommend approval last submitted.
Move approval? Yeah, four. We're going to take all three of them together, right?
I'm sorry. AJ, AK, and AL.
Okay. We have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries 5-0. Now we're looking at the 2025 California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly election. Dr. Pulver?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is probably where the entire board, Mrs. Meg Cattulli, who had served on CSBA Delegate Assembly for so many years and knew all the individuals. However, that being said, Mrs. Hill has also served in the past on Delegate Assembly. In essence, there are 10 individuals who have submitted their names from multiple school districts to serve on the CSBA Region 15 Delegate Assembly. And as a board, you can select up to seven. You don't have to select seven. You can select one, any number in between that, but you have one vote as an entire board. I did get, there are 10 individuals, and I thought I'd at least, there might be different ways board members want to talk about how to consider. Maybe you want to take a look at consideration of who's current, so the people, if they're on the current, if they have an asterisk, they're an incumbent. If you see that there are people, some of them have multiple school districts, and maybe you want to think about, is it better to have people from multiple school districts as opposed to two from one school district? And then I thought I'd also give you the breakdown of the 10, of the type of districts that they are in terms of K5, K6, K8. I'm just going to say that, K8. There are five districts there that are K8, serve K8 students. There are three districts there out of the 10 that serve 912. And there are only two districts that serve like us, which is a Unified School District, K12, and that is obviously Saddleback Valley USD and Brea Olinda USD. So I'll turn it over to you, and I'm not sure, again, Diana Marles, if you have any, if you know any of these board members that you would think would make great representation, but it's up to you guys how you want to select the up to seven candidates.
I choose to defer to Mrs. Hill. I think I always have relied on her and Mrs. Cattulli for what, because they're outside of the district experience. Would you like to share?
Sure. So that's interesting how you broke it down into school district and really, who I was going to recommend, who I have personally sat with or known on CSBA before, were Bonnie Castrelli. She's High School, Huntington Beach High School Union District. Art Montezzi. He, Montez, he's a elementary school district in Centralia, not very far away. And then Carrie Flanders, Brea Olinda, which is a unified district. So that, those were the three I'd recommend. I will say that it has been the last couple of years, I, my professional career has made it just difficult for me to serve on something else. Otherwise, I would, but it has been, it's been more difficult than I think it has been in the past. And so I really appreciate people that have served and continue to serve to really legislate and advocate for public schools with CSBA.
Thank you.
Ms. Davidson, so in looking at the descriptions and also just kind of trying to examine it, it's, those are three that I know I had marked as well. My one thought was actually looking at the incumbents, that if there had been consistency, and honestly, if there had not been issues brought to our attention, kind of going with an incumbent slate. My one place of looking at our ballot, a recommendation of someone that's not an incumbent that I would like to recommend, was the, actually, the removal of, now I'm losing my, now I'm losing my thought here, removal of, sorry, I'm looking at the top, it was not an incumbent. It was adding Beverly Berryman as one of the seven. I have worked with Beverly and talked to her before. She also led an amazing session that we were on recently. So I think she helped facilitate a session, the number of school board members were on. So I don't know if I were to go through my list, but I, is this the best way to kind of read out who? So I have, for my, my list would be Beverly Berryman, Bonnie Castri, Art Montez, Rhodia Sheed, Carrie Flanders, Susie Swartz, and Lauren Katsker. That should be seven, if I did it right.
That is seven.
Okay. And part of my thought was also that we would not have any district would be represented twice, so we would not have two people from any district, because I think that was potentially something we could have seen.
I'm fine with that as well.
So it's Beverly Berryman, Bonnie Castri, Art Montez, Rhodia Sheed, Carrie Flanders, Susie Swartz, and Lauren Katsker.
So basically, the incumbents plus Berry, Beverly Berryman?
Correct.
I move approval. Do we have to move?
Yep. You do.
Did you say Carrie Flanders?
She, yes, I did. I did. It should be seven.
I move approval of Beverly, Bonnie, Art, Rhodia, Susie, Carrie, and Lauren.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Thank you both. I've been on, looked at too many ballots for judges and just been fearful of voting for people without any kind of recommendation, so thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries 5-0. I know.